Because when we sign this legislation about declaring lawyers, government employees that are on duty and on premises, it certainly was not for, in my opinion, them to get into a pissing match where they can park with the PD. That to me is just stupid. Like there, that to me is just boundary pushing for the sake of boundary pushing. I think it's more prudent and responsible to make it on a per case basis because judges don't create docket cases or bench trials. They respond to them. If they're responding, that means they're participating and they're actively trying to, you know, provide themselves as a help to the city. You know, we just keep track of that using the official channels that already exist. I will assemble like a monthly ledger or a record keeping or accounting, whatever term you want to use at the end of each month to the treasurer who then makes the disbursement since based on those records.
Great. My suggestion is go look at like all the bench trial requests and see how many are actively occurring during shift three to even see if it's needed.
Uh, it's needed.
I think there's, that's a kind of a catch 22 situation. A lot of people stopped requesting bench trials.
I wake up in the morning, I'll look and I'll see there were like two or three missed or one missed and it's like, you know.
There's three that I see in the past month, like actually.
Damien told me he had 11 missed bench child requests in a row, like over the course of a few days.
And that's also just, that's also a self fulfilling prophecy, right?
Definitely. There's five now. Five is what I got to April 11th is five.
Oh shit.
Oh.
Whistleblower? That was your thing?
Hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I did come up with one note for this one actually, which is like, like a Sal Rosenberg provision. You know, if you have a medical reason, you can't wear a helmet, you're fine.
Oh yeah. We have that in the, uh, the drip act as well. That's.
Start mistreating you just because you had concerns about something, then went to the mayor or the chief of staff about it. That's a problem.
So Cornwood, let me ask you, you're in the police department that go to court are dealt with by people on the civilian oversight board. Do you think that that's better than like, if it were council members? I'm not even trying to like throw shade your way, but like you're a member of law enforcement, you know?
Right.
You're elected to this position from amongst the rank and file. So if you're on an appeals panel type situation about a whistleblowing situation, you could in theory then communicate to your lieutenant.
Right. I, I don't think, I don't think that's, uh.
I don't think that like Cornwood's going to do that. I'm just saying.
Can I, uh, can I make the recommendation of it? Cause it doesn't seem like y'all have like a solid recommendation of how to deal with this. Maybe meet the two of y'all, come up with something, put it in writing and discuss it. Is it, it's very much like actually first shit at the wall and see what sticks, keeps right now.
I feel like we're, we're almost right there with having this thing. We've already talked about it for two weeks. I mean, I think we just.
Right. There's no playing with it though.
We don't want to overcook it either, right?
Yeah. Put pad to paper. That's it.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's fine. Like workflow wise, like people come to me, I go to Crane, Crane decides court wise, how, how it stacks up from there. Panel, no panel, like.
Yeah. I agree with that because I need to sit down and think, well, I think you just use a generic phrasing of enables the chief justice to assemble a panel. Doesn't have, it doesn't have to state whether it's a panel of judges, a panel of city council members, just a panel based on the situation.
Rain, if you are good with that, then I am, I am good with the way that sounds just like in general.
If I'm brought a viable case of corruption, I will assemble a panel to deal with it, which is honestly what would have happened anyway. We can vote for it. Yeah. I say yes.
Yeah. As discussed, I'm ready to vote.
Danny Nice, here we go.
It's mayor.
Do they still have the ability to do spoof IDs, Cornwood? Is that a thing?
Of course. I know there's not, but.
Right. That used to be a thing in the past.
They can get the machine back. I'm sure.
Yeah. All right. Everybody got their notebook?
Yeah.
Yes ma'am.
Open them up. If you feel like reading the lovely bullet points. I'm okay. So pretty much the sharks, I am coming to you for $250,000 grand prize for my week long survival event. It is legends versus locals, which means eight returning all-stars will compete against eight new local players. I've been working on it for about two months now. I'm probably still a couple of weeks out. Sixty-four challenges have been created by me and played out after this season takes place, which is a ton of running of ideas, but I will get through it. Again, they take months for me to plan, given away $16 million through this, but five million of those were donated back to me because they loved it so much, begging for another season. It is so well attended that for, not only for every tribal council, do I have to make seating for the audience? I also have to provide seating for every single challenge. People filter in and out to just watch this event every single time it happens. So we have people coming. Yeah. We have people coming in and out every single day, just to watch challenges, to sip the tea. We have people live tweeting all the way through it. It's always such a good, a good fucking time.
I can confirm I was the OG live tweeter of season one.
Oh, there you go. That's true. You absolutely were. I mean, I had Bones and Luciano playing in my event a couple of weeks ago, and they were saying, let's settle this shit from five years ago on survival. It's fantastic. I love it. I have made some calls around to see how much the average civilian worker could make in a week if they were really grinding their ass off. Standard seems to be about 100,000 to 200,000, depending on how hard they go. So I feel like I need to incentivize people to take a break from that grind to, you know, make that money in a fun way because.
All right. Be honest. How much are you underselling your number by?
She's underselling that number so hard, Andy. That's not enough money.
Oh, oh, I mean, I will take anything. I just never want to ask too much.
How much? Okay. What, now what number would you actually propose if you weren't worried about fiscal responsibility?
If I wasn't worried about fiscal responsibility?
Yeah.
I would ask for half a million to give away. I would ask for an additional like 200,000 to give for a rerun of this season with a different cast, who will make last, but will still have a great time.
Sounds good to me. Shit.
I think we give her the 700,000.
Yeah.
Question. Prize pool just for the sole winner?
Typically for the sole winner. I, I have toyed with the idea of having like a top two, top three.
You should do like, you should do a fan favorite vote. Do like a Twitter poll.
Yeah.
Nico Cantor was our fan favorite for season two from season one.
Fan favorite gets like a hundred K or something. That'd be cool. Now a fan favorite, right?
Make it, make it, make it a surprise then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Announce it like at the final council. Yeah.
This meeting is recorded though, so.
Well, Max, if you did, if you didn't listen, we're already going to have to edit some parts out this considering we authorized. So probably that shouldn't go on record either.
What is Tessa's review here? What the hell is this?
Oh yeah. Apparently some of, okay. So in season two, I allowed phones and that means that people were texting each other. I would assume things like, he can't be here anymore. We gotta fucking cut his throat. And then apparently she was part of an investigation because of her text messages.
Layer neutral.
Wait, what?
Because of out of context.
Hold on. She said what? She said, cut his throat? Said that shit years ago.
I don't know what she said specifically. Saying those types of things were very frequently probably texted among each other.
She's been doing this a long time. She stabbed me in the throat like.
Hey, what the hell?
Like two months ago.
Oh my God. I'm sorry.
Andy, we have, uh, we just got, I was going to say, we just got helicopters and, and we could even do some shit with your event.
Cornwood.
That's another discussion.
Eat chickens where they hatch. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's just, uh, just an idea that I got for down the road, maybe for season five.
Hey, thank you, Andy. We'll go home.
Super excited for it. Thanks guys.
As is customary, we will now go to my left to start to see, uh, who has what to present. We've got Solomon Walker.
Uh, excuse me?
TJ.
What?
Sorry. TJ Walker. Sorry.
Wow.
A D M C, last name probably related somehow. You know how it is.
Not related, but thank you. Uh, we're two very distinct people. I definitely don't have a British accent. Uh, I have questioned quite a bit. I want to follow up on some of the dog town stuff. So the last time that we had talked, I did go meet with Bobby and actually got him to be serious for a hot minute, which is kind of hard to do. So did a full assessment kind of of where they are at as costs. They estimate their cost roughly to be about eight to 10K per day.
Pause, pause. These idiots are accounting for several thousand dollars wasted bullets that they're shooting at the rear.
I was seeing that.
I'm well aware. Yeah. This is across the department. I'm, I'm well aware. Believe me.
I'm just going to enter my stance on the record ahead of time. Fuck Bobby and Carmine and fuck their shitty request. And I love them and they're doing a great job over there. But part of this agreement where they get carte blanche and this lawless zone was that we don't have to deal with them or fund them. We, we gave them jobs. We're hiring more of their people and that's it.
At least they're paid too.
Let me finish with this before we go.
All right. And I know I'm just getting myself on the record because that's, you know, that's it.
Before we start to tell this part, cause you weren't here for the part where they're doing a proposal crane. And I'm going to give you, I guess, a little, I'll T O D R on this. So they came in asking and gave a demonstration of inmates that were shackled. And they were requesting that they're able to work with the state to do sanitation, do deliveries, do jobs with them. They're requesting then funds afterwards, which would be helped or used to then basically fund themselves. I have on there a suggestion. This is not by any all means. I thought that it would be appropriate if the state would purchase materials if they were from sanitation or dog town employees, inmates and deposit funds into, I just have a pending state account accessible only by those members of dog town. Those purchased by the state will be used for repairs of emergency service vehicles should, this is down the line, that be of interest. And Chavon and I talked a little bit about this, businesses interested in working with PD or such wise for those emergency service vehicles may bid on a contract to administer. And Chavon and I talked a little bit about this, businesses interested in working with PD or such wise for those emergency service vehicles may bid on a contract to administer those repairs. Kind of a circular economy with it. Thoughts?
These guys are idiots TJ. Are you willing to do all the work for them?
Well, we do have a pending cabinet that is looking at commerce and labor and that could fall right into there. But yeah, am I able to? Listen, I, I just want to give people opportunities and if they're willing to do the work, then I see no reason why, as long as it's actually benefiting. If it's for bullshit, then no.
How do they get the materials? They're going to go do sanitation?
Yeah. So they brought in life or some.
Life force.
Okay. And so then, so, so you're telling me you're going to get a bunch of these lifers are going to go to sanitation. What happens if someone robs them doing sanitation? Is the lifer with 15 life senses for, you know, cannibal torture going to then bite the guy's face off? And then am I going to be liable?
They're trying to ask for essentially the ability to function as cops outside of the prison in regards to their.
Fuck no.
It was pretty, oh, that was definitely where they went, but we did talk them down.
We gave them homework and their homework was to go talk to Barrick, how potentially this could function. They obviously haven't gotten back to us yet. I've actually been trying to reach Barrick in the meantime for separate issues. So I'd imagine that they did not catch up with him, but it would be based upon them coming back here and proposing that. So I just did a cost analysis, basically what they're formulating, if this is feasible or not. I'm not trying to pitch it for them. I'm just putting it as a suggestion as more context from what they came with.
If this goes through, it would be much easier to allow them to get the materials from the slave labor for the lifers or whatever, to sell them and to pocket the money. I don't think we need like another account. We don't need to add more bureaucratic.
And that's fair. As a perspective, as a continuation from the emergency service vehicle side, I did get the numbers from EMS, ran those. They're roughly about $5,628 a day is what their actual expenditures are. Four thousand of that, which is 80% is going to the actual repairs while a thousand per day is going to equipment. So it's just more of a circular thing.
You know, you know why Bobby and Bobby and Carmine have to constantly repair their shit?
This isn't Bobby and Carmine. This is, I just said EMS.
Yeah.
Where are you going with that, Craig?
Well, Bobby and Carmine driving around like assholes all day. And when we're sitting here and we're talking about groups like the EMS and things like that, some of them ain't too far off from Bobby and Carmine in terms of driving habits. Need to be honest about that.
I'm just putting out the information of what can be used to be beneficial. That, that.
All right.
It's on them. If they want to come back and propose this and actually have the ability to do that, that's not on me. I'm not trying to advocate for it. I'm just did an analysis of where things were at.
Your intention was to have like that account pay for EMS repairs and shit?
So the intention of, no, no, we would buy the materials off of them. We would have a business bid on the contract from a government to be the sole provider, sole administrator of repairs for EMS, so that those materials that we buy can then subsequently be used to repair our essential services vehicles. We're using the inmates to gather sanitation parts that then goes back to the state. The state then fixes the vehicles of our emergency services. They use it to fund whatever the hell they're going down there. That's really about it.
Did you, who, who did you talk to from, uh, EMS about this?
I have none. This is just a theoretical. I got their cost analysis.
Great idea. See, I was just wondering if, you know, maybe the, the chief of EMS came to you and talked about it.
No, no, no. I, I just got access to the funding for it, uh, as to what they are currently spending in their expenditures. And I just figured, you know what? How do we make this all relative? So one feeds into the other.
Bobby Charles and Carmine are very much a give them an inch, they'll take a mile type of folks. And sometimes it'll take two miles. Uh, so you gotta be careful with what you give.
Oh, I agree. This is depending if they actually do the damn work. Can't we just have them make license plates? That'd be great.
My mind, I conjures an image.
In the middle of the prison?
Of Bobby with like a shackled inmate with like a collar on, just like leading him towards his enemy to like eat him.
Murphy, you do not have to tell me. I have spent more time in prison with him than I care to even let you know.
Using lifers as pets outside of the prison.
So they're going to, oh, so many things.
Y'all weren't too opposed to him last week when he was here.
It's just good old fashioned for profit prison labor. I understand.
So they're going to have shackles on these, on these prisoners and they're going to have them go work for it for free.
That is exactly what he showed us last week. Y'all were here.
I did see something as well. I just remembered this earlier. If you look up Grover Carlson, are they already doing this? There's two individuals in their prison gear with Scotty Bard, who I know is hired to the DOC says Scotty said Nelson, your buzz on our future. Maybe it's something different, but they're already, maybe they're already trying to do this without speaking to the PD about how that would function.
They are outside. I don't know what they're doing, but yeah.
What happens if someone decides it'd be really funny to ambush the DOC and break out the lifers?
Uh, then they're harboring a fugitive.
Yeah, we talked about that. Uh, technically be a hut.
That's a hut. I don't think people are going to be fucking around and finding out with that.
And we explained to Bobby and Carmine very clearly.
Oh yeah, they will.
Not retaliate against individuals on behalf of the lifers or anything.
Well, hold on. Are Bobby and Carmine subject to search when outside? Cause I know for a fact the PD's provided me evidence as well as pretty much anyone who would listen, somebody even got twatted out that these yokels were brandishing PD guns in the prison. Told them specifically that if you manage to get your hands on illegal guns and things like that, I'm not going to mess with you if it's only in the prison. But the second any of that comes outside of the prison, we gotta, you know, big fucking problem. And I don't, you know, trust either of them to, you know, not get unraveled in their own authority and think, oh, I'm the big dick strutting around with all my inmates. I can do whatever I want. And then, you know, pull out their PD Glock when someone tries to hold them up.
That's why we tried to explain to them that they're not.
Argue. Well, I'm, I'm active on duty DOC. So.
That's what they were trying to go for. That's why they were told they had suspected Barrick about where the line on that is.
Something happened a couple of days ago. Is it a Ramiel Rahman that we had in custody? And for some reason, we decided this is the first time we're going to do a prison transport. I was up patrolling north with Crox Steve. I see a white vehicle, looked like it was crashed out against the tree. And this is around the same time everybody's seat belts just were, were real loose. So I thought, oh shit, somebody probably got ejected from their vehicle. Didn't. So I get out of the vehicle and I go check up on it and say, oh shit, is something going on? Next thing you know, I end up getting just mag dumped from across the street by a couple of folks and the guy that we're trying to help out. The belief is, is that these guys had set up to stop prison transport. Now here's my question. How the shit, I don't know what that was. It was probably Al Qaeda. How the shit do these guys know that we're doing a transport? When we usually have the local DOC drive.
Uh, do I got to fill you in on this? Or Max, you know, you want to fill in on this one too? Usually, Cornwood, what will happen is if they request a lawyer, most of the members of that they're with will figure out who an active lawyer is. They'll go down, uh, make some sort of contact usually and assign that they should be requesting a transport, which then means they're probably trying to break them out. Prison transports used to be a very, very common thing a long time ago. To the point where in training in academy, we used to practice setups for that.
And the issue is, is that also at that time, we had coordination with actual DOC who were actual vetted government employees, not Bobby and Carmine. So first of all, we never as a council authorized those two idiots to do anything outside the prison. In fact, we said quite the opposite. The concept that somehow there would be a prison transport at all that involved Bobby and Carmine would be contrary to everything we've discussed.
So here's the thing. I don't know. I don't know if there was a lawyer involved in that situation or not.
Yeah, no, I.
What I'm saying.
I'm aware.
Is the, if this, if this is that one time when this, this kind of hadn't really been established, and then all of a sudden these guys know, I don't know a hundred percent. Bobby claims, you know, come hell and high water, that it wasn't him, when I called him out on it. I don't know how else they would know because the only people that knew about the prison transport occurring were the people in the cells. And I don't even know if they had a lawyer for that situation because it's Rami. I don't know if he, if he normally gets a lawyer or not.
What about Bobby's employees?
Again, my point being, and this goes back to the whole radio shit of them wanting the radios, say all they want.
I'm not touching on this one.
With some, some stipulations, but there's a reason why Chief Justice Crane said he didn't want them having radios at all. But I do understand their plight in terms of having to deal with the radios that everybody else uses. The fact that these guys are on our radio channels, that they're privy to the information that we have, and then I'm getting mag dumped for trying to be a good damn Samaritan, make sure that somebody's not hurt on the side of the road pisses me the hell off. How the hell do they know about it?
Little, uh, grilling investigation time there, Cornwood. Getting in a little cell, asked a bunch of questions, put them on record, see what they say.
Yeah. And they say, no, it wasn't me. Yeah, it was.
Well, I mean.
Investigation don't do shit.
You could potentially see if they called anyone during that timeframe or any of their employers, because they have to make contact with it. So then you can subpoena their folks.
We could push for a subpoena. I mean, there's.
How did this transport work?
Side track to this point.
I mean, no, it's, it's to that. No.
How did this transport work? Did they come to MRPD and pick them up?
Yes. The police escort. Well, I don't even know because this was before the transport was even occurring. So I was in the area, just happened to be in the area, didn't know the transport was occurring. I wasn't involved in the scene. And then I ended up getting mag. So unless somebody within the PD for the first time ever told somebody else, hey, we're doing a prison transport.
That's not the first time ever. Come on.
As far as I know, it's a collapse.
Do you know who cleared it on PD's side?
No idea. I was, I was not involved.
Sounds like a slacks moment. I'm going to be like.
Yeah.
I heard there's only one unit assigned too. That's it.
Oh, well then one unit means that unit was the one who authorized it.
Right.
I didn't get the name.
There's ways to go ahead and like this out with it. If it truly did happen, because we may be going down a rabbit hole. I recommend just, you know, doing the proper investigation. If that is something that you believe, put it together, put a subpoena and shoot it over to Crane in his department. Shall we move on to the next one? So the first one, top one, the emergency essential funding. This is kind of a new one I just put up there. Should the state ever be declared into an emergency relief or emergency state that there is a state fund that is set aside in a separate account, where is only accessible to what would be at the time, whoever the current treasurer is, and that's state of emergency. Proposed amount as, or sorry, 50 million.
I'd do 20 million.
Meet you halfway.
Sure. 25 million. I think that, I think this is a great idea. I'll put it simply, it's pretty hard to get to zero, but I don't doubt that there's someone dumb enough who might get elected in the future who could possibly do that.
So you said 25 and meet you at 30.
Sure.
I think that's good.
Emergency fund sounds fine to me. Sounds responsible.
Problem is we can't, we can't make bank accounts right now.
When that should or happen to occur, that will be put into there with what I am proposing to do. Establish who is classified as essential workers at that point. I know I talked about that a little bit. I do have a list. If you have any thoughts on that now, current list, PD EMS doctors, department of justice, food service workers and mechanics. Those are the ones I have currently listed as essential services.
So what I would like to see this, the purpose of this be is this money set aside, a future mayor fucks up so hard that the state account goes to zero. That means no one gets paid for any job.
Correct.
What I would like to see this, this money being used for is if it somehow gets to zero, the future treasurer then is allowed to move that money that was put aside into the main account. That should give time for an impeachment investigation. Cause obviously the mayor has fucked up so hard that there needs to be some kind of impeachment investigation. That mayor gets impeached and that allows everything to keep moving citywide.
Now you just made me think of something.
What up?
What happens if someone invests in like a shit ton of material goods or like a shit ton of like cryptocurrency? And then they get all their friends together and form a political party and get a mayor elected and then intentionally crash, uh, the economy. And then they're the hoarders of like all these essential goods, which then they can just set a price on as they demand.
Fair. All right. This goes right into my next one. And maybe we just talk about both of them in succession. Maybe we should take a look at the funding approval and transparency act. Read that for a section. There it's nine different sections on there. That is what you just described Max, the entire purpose of.
No, stop. No, it's not. I'll let everyone read.
Which one are on the F A F O?
Uh, no, the funding approval and transparency act.
Yeah, the F A T A one. All right.
Yeah, there's a lot in here.
Yeah. I've been busy for the four days since we last met.
Maybe you can walk us through it TJ.
Yeah. This is a shared accountability for the council as a whole, not just for, for example, yourself, Max. It's also in a public perspective, gives you and others the legal cover and the plausible deniability with a dual approval system. So for example, if you get questioned about decisions, it becomes a shared responsibility. It cannot be pinned solely on one person, i.e. the mayor side to it. And that situation that you just described cannot happen. There's a less chance for taking a fall or financial mismanagement or for allegations of corruption, if those things are set up. Once again, this is set up for a future where not one person can just dominate that funding, as you had mentioned, and decide basically fuck the city at a whim and acts as a safeguard for the entirety of the system. So essentially it's allowing us to do the proper checks and balances that should occur. I don't envision too much of an issue with it because it's as a group decision and it's a signed off aspect to it. This allows a level of layer.
I'm for it, but I'm also well aware that I'm not the person who makes these changes. I would like to not be punished with pay decrease to less than a fourth of what our pay was with no warning. So yeah, I'm for it.
Can you explain what a requestor is in section three?
Yeah. So for example, that would be like Andy, anyone that is requesting funds to be used from the state account. Anyone that is, for example, says Siobhan has someone going on for the cabinet side to it. Siobhan would relay the quest, act as a requestor. Anyone can technically be requested. That could be, for example, Crane, you would be the requestor for the department of justice to then pay out for your judges, for the bench trials and for docket cases.
So every time a judge completed a docket case or a bench trial, you would want you and me to sign off on the dispersment of money?
I'd probably just give you a stack of it at the end of the week and be like, here you go. Sign these.
Would you, do you, do you prefer that process to you simply being the one to do it like whenever one is done? Like the judge finishes the case and then they can immediately go to you and be like, hey, you know, in accordance with the thing the chief justice passed or whatever, you know, you owe me 20K or whatever.
In my thing, we, we settled how we're doing the dispersments. I already wrote that in there. Would this supersede other?
This is a basis, what those things are built upon. When I mentioned that we should probably just take a quick second for voting on some of that is I wanted to see if we wanted to establish this for the basis of that of how it's approved. So if we have a baseline and build upon it, we can incorporate it as you wish.
I think we're going to need more than a second to talk about this one.
That's entirely fine.
I have two or three fiscal policies I adhere to and I adhere to during term one. And term two, we're currently in a, a saving phase so that we can go back to what we were doing up until the election. For about a month and a half up until election, I super pumped money into the sanitation market because materials were desperately needed. In section five, this says that you're responsible for the initial review and validation of all funding requests. The treasurer ensures that all funding requests are in accordance with the budgetary constraints and fiscal policies. Who in your vision should be the person to set fiscal policy in Los Santos?
That'd be joint treasurer slash mayor. So if you want to do a golden era or a.
Golden age.
Yeah. If you want to call it that, and then you work jointly with it and you say, all right, we're going to save up a certain amount for a period of time and we know that we're going to do that, then we work together to establish, at what point can we do that?
What if we never agree with each other?
Well, as long as you don't drain the account to zero, then part of this is also from the council side as well.
Let's assume hypothetically.
Hypothetic.
Let's say this passes. Let's say, you know, me being the mayor, person who had sole control and power over this and who has demonstrably been extremely acute that, you know, for hypothetical.
Hypothetically.
Let's say this passes. Let's say, you know, me being the mayor, the person who had sole control and power over this and who has demonstrably been extremely acute and responsible. Let's say I am, I just don't like the fact that you are, you are the person who is involved in that process. What if I just choose not to work with?
Uh, then I'm going to ask you, what's the purpose of having a treasurer?
Well, the purpose of the treasurer is to ensure that someone like me does not abuse my power.
Correct.
The person of the treasurer is to ensure that I'm not embezzling money from the state account. Purpose of the treasurer is to ensure that I am not so wildly irresponsible that you can, you're, you're essentially going to use your power to audit the state account to prove that I just don't like the fact that you are the person who is involved in that process. What if I just choose not to work with?
Then I'm going to ask you, what's the purpose of having a treasurer?
The treasurer is to ensure that someone like me, the purpose, the person of the treasurer is to ensure that I'm not embezzling money from the state account. Purpose of the treasurer is to ensure that I am not so wildly irresponsible that you can, you're, you're essentially going to use your power to audit the state account to prove that I am someone who should be impeached if I were abusing my power, which I'm sure was attempted term one, obviously did not succeed. What I'm curious about is this act a response to my policies from term one?
No.
No. Okay. So what made you?
Actually, that came from a fair amount of actually my interview with Crane, to be honest. Crane, how'd you kind of put it? When someone pumps money into the economy? It's the wording that you use when you thought it was the possibility coercive votes based upon doing a golden age right before voting period.
Yeah. I mean, I, uh, shit, sounds like good politics. I guess. There's also easier ways to solve that issue than implementing a whole other checking balance on every decision the mayor makes. And that is you just, you know, make it so the economy has to be locked in at a non, you know, accelerated stance, you know, a week or two before the elections.
I think that's a separate thing with that though. That's pertaining to, this is the entirety, not just for two weeks.
I know. I'm, I'm just saying, that's the citation that I'm concerned about. That's what I'm worried about.
I'm trying to basically put with this is that, you know, my job is yes, Max, to ensure checks and balances, to make sure you're not doing anything stupid. By on top of this, it's also ensuring that there's dual responsibility between you and I.
Hmm.
So you're not basically fucking yourself out of a job.
Yeah, of course. I made some pretty poignant and powerful decisions fiscally recently, and I definitely did some during term one. And I definitely had the details of the state account leaked by the former treasurer to Stanley Miller, who then began to tweet that the state account was losing more than $3 million per day. The state account losing $3 million per day was not enough to inspire the treasurer to maybe vote that I should be impeached. I'm not too concerned about impeachment or losing my job. I'm not concerned that I need dual responsibility for this role. In fact, I'm so pleased with how that golden age went that I'm even more confident now than I was while it was happening. Uh, right now the state count has more money in it ever has right now. We're almost back up to 82 million, I think was the cap or 83.
It's, uh, the check today was about 74.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. At the end of term one, it was almost at 39 million or 41.
Like 50 of 39? Holy shit.
We got pretty low there.
Holy shit. So, so we're breaking it in right?
Yeah. And it's enough.
I like the idea of transparency.
This is not just for a now, this is for everybody.
I'm going to step in here and not, not to, I don't want to be a damn inhibitor. Okay. I hate inhibitor. I, I'm just taking a look at this and the way things are trending and whatnot. And, and yeah, the, the point is that this is going to be for the future. Sure. But, and I ain't no damn hell. I don't even know what it's called ecologist or whatever, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I'm with Cornwood. I was, you guys know what I say. Let the kids work in the coal mines.
Fair enough. Okay. So I'm not, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not trying to break anything with this. It's continuing with it and it's ensuring that if something does happen, people will understand why things happen for the salary side to it. Hey, for example, Andy's really good friends with Max right now, and this could look really bad if only Max signed off on it. You have now two people signing off for it and it has already been approved.
So you're, you're calling it like a, a, a cover your ass legislation, essentially.
Correct.
That's, I mean, I think that's all fine and I think that's all fine. That's, I mean, I, I think that's all fine and I think that's all fine and.
Veto power.
Yeah, yeah, myself any veto power.
It is veto.
You can call it for what you want, but that's what you want to put it as.
Unelected member of the council.
I'm not comfortable also with previous mayors that have bought bombs from me controlling everything in the fucking state.
There, there are certain aspects of this that I like a lot.
I wanna out, Max, I wanna cut through this because I wanna ask, you and I have discussed in pretty good duration, what I thought about, you know, TJ coming in here and being treasurer and, you know, the things that I felt you guys agreed upon, right? And, you know, I learned some things that you told me that you, you know, I didn't realize that made you guys, you know, I think have similar viewpoints on things. So I'd like to hear primarily from you, like your breakdown of this, what you like, what you don't, and what you suggest of any changes.
Okay, the, the example given was the Andy Jones presentation or whatever. I like the process we've been doing, which is that, you know, we'll invite people into the council meeting and then they can, they can give their presentation and then we can all, we, we all decide right then and there, if we want to give this person money for their event. I also like the idea of the treasurer, for example, TJ, TJ has storied history in Los Santos. So he knows what is good and not good in the realm of proposed event funding. I like the idea of the treasurer having the sole power. I like the idea of someone being able to call the treasurer and be like, hey, here's my event idea. The treasurer then being like, okay, is this event cool and, you know, high effort and deserving of a financial reward or not? And then I like the idea of the treasurer deciding yes or no. If they decide yes, then they record what they did and then just post it in the fucking reports for us to see. Like a time and like withdraw and like, you know, who it went to and their state ID, blah, blah, blah. I like that idea a lot. I like state funds are subject to information requests. Love that. I love.
Be clear, you know what that means, right? Like any layperson being asked.
Uh, so long, so long as you're willing to do that work as the treasurer, because you have access to the state account and potentially future exports and stuff, so it could be a lot of work.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, it's a continuing and ongoing thing.
I love all of section six. I love the idea of me per, because it's very satisfying for me to be able to, for example, fill out that, that fiscal report that I've been doing in, in reports. I love doing. I have always been a huge proponent of transparency. Uh, I wouldn't mind if all of our reports internally right now were public. Uh, I wouldn't mind if someone could go and get the export for the state account and see where everything is being spent right now. I, I would love for section six to just be the norm.
Those changes, it was through everybody, which the council then has a vote on. So when you're saying that treasury has a sole veto power, no, I'm giving power to everybody.
Black, we did it at the start and it worked just fine then.
It worked fine and, but it was slow. And there's another aspect of this that is somewhat concerning with is, you know, what if one day TJ, you just disappear? Uh, any attempt to make any adjustments to this stuff would sit in limbo for weeks until we determine whether or not you're going to come back. And then we're gonna have to wait even longer for another treasurer to be picked, so there's gonna have to be more interviews for that. So it could be like an almost month process where the mayor's ability, which was formerly instant, is then bogged down in this sort of limbo bureaucracy where we have to establish the treasurer.
The craziest, what if, what if he just disappears?
Well, I mean, well, for example.
I thought you were against what if?
Okay, so this isn't about you, uh, because I know you're, okay, but uh, i- i- in the future, what if you take a vacation? What if we, what if you can't, we can't get in contact with each other? We're Solomon Walker. He was just elected. He couldn't even make it to the second fucking council meeting. Where is he?
Apparently.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, he's got the consumption. I don't like the idea of it being bogged down in bureaucracy. I like being able to go out there and speak with people and figure out what's wrong. Last night, I took my wife's bike to Mosley's and Angus, a solo mechanic working out of Mosley's, told me, I haven't had repair parts for five days. It is impossible for me to compete with places like Milton's because they are buying up all the stuff. And he was like, is there anything you can do to make this better for us? And I said, hmm, and then I remembered there was a 13% tax on all mechanic supplies. I was like, yeah, I could make it easier for you. I could go change the, the mechanic tax down to 0% to give you guys the ability to actually potentially convince someone to come into Mosley's and A, the 3.4K down from 4.1. I went back to my office, changed it. He called me a minute later and said, oh my God, it worked. Like this gives me a ton of hope. What does that interaction become when we involve this whole extra process?
I, I gotta, I got an idea actually. Max, you speaking made me kind of think of this. What if there's a compromise between the two options? Like a sole authorization adjustment limit? And then for anything more like extremely drastic, then that would need a sign off. Wouldn't that be like, cause that way you could do the day to day and impact things, you know, as needed based on the feedback you get. You know, you would need to talk to the treasurer about, you know, doing something that's more extreme, right? And I don't know, I don't know the numbers. I, I obviously saw the notes you put in, you go from like 175 to 125.
Right.
I mean, what if like you could go, you know, 80 to one, you know, whatever it is, or I don't know, I don't know, whatever, like maybe you go two thirds each direct, I don't, I don't know. Uh, the numbers could be figured out, but what if there's some kind of compromise there?
That's kind of how it worked when I first entered office, uh, and I first lowered taxes as low as I possibly could. I was informed that I could only do 20% of the current value.
Sure.
And it's, it sucked cock. I'm gonna be honest, I hated it.
Well, that was a hard stop on that. What I'm saying is you could still do that, just you have to talk to somebody about it. Cause that was a hard no.
Well, it was, it was a hard no from the past. It wasn't actually confirmed that I couldn't do that. I respected what was the case in the past because I didn't want to step on any toes. Fortunately, the state in all of its benevolence has given the ability for the mayor to make more active and decisive decisions. Because situations like last night with Angus Bozo, the clown, uh, could happen. And that could have never happened in the previous system. And it would have taken, uh, like Cantor said, a week at most to do a change that could have happened at the snap of a finger essentially.
You don't think the Angus situation could have been resolved with a less drastic adjustment?
No, and, and that's a whole different issue because I'm, I'm pretty ear to the ground when it comes to the materials market, market right now. As you can see with my adjustments right now, I'm kind of working it back up to where it was before. I want to see how it impacts the, uh, the state account. I think ultimately the people of Los Santos deserve someone who can respond to Angus the way that I did.
I'm sure all the government factions love that they can be punished for giving you a speeding ticket in an instant. That's great.
I like a compromise here with what Crane was kind of proposing with this and, you know, I'm, I just want to caution you, Max, of how that can also be seen. Is that should someone, this Angus person be your personal friend and they're looking for a little bit of a, hey, how can you help me out? That also could be seen pretty negatively on top of it. And what's to say, you know, one person.
He is my friend for the record. We are friends.
Fair. And so what's to say, oh, you did this for this person, why aren't you doing it for that? I get what you're saying with that. Uh, believe me, the, the swiftness of it, you know, following the fact that we do meet once a week on top of this. So following council approval, file sign off required for both, should I not be there? Whatever, we can just say basically, hey, listen, if the council approves it, that's, that's fine. It doesn't have to be from, as your sticking point would be both treasurer and mayor for the salary adjustments, it should be council approval as a whole. And so you don't have to wait on me, should something ever happen to me, which is a concerning question that you bring up.
Well, no, uh, cause people, people go on vacation all the time. It wasn't like a, you might get killed thing. It was more like a, you know, what if you just have to be gone for like two or three weeks, you know?
That's entirely fine. Then the council would have the ability to approve that as well and that could be enacted upon. It, it's a compromise in between these.
I'm all for things being responsive, like the mayor said, and I'm all for there being checks and balances, like the treasurer ones. What I think is like the ideal situation is the treasurer has every right and ability to audit what the mayor does or what the council does in the past tense.
If we look at this, if I remove following council approval, the final sign off will be required from treasurer and mayor. Just put the council reserves right for final approval. That makes sense?
I've said, I've said my piece. So mayor can do all the, is that just government salary or is that all salaries?
That says government and public workers.
So that includes sanitation and.
Well, I guess I should.
Under section three definitions, it says all pretty much everything, all monies and the state funds.
Okay, isn't it harder to get the council vote than just the treasurer sign off?
The way that I guess it was being interpreted was that I have a final veto on if I don't like it or not. And so that's what the removal is.
Says, there's an and phrasing, right? It was both the treasurer and the mayor final sign off, which would imply veto power if you don't sign off on it.
Right, that's what we were moving. So that's why I, I have it highlighted down there.
Alright.
So that would be, I would just wordsmith that slightly to take out that portion of it and have the council as a power for it.
So that means the mayor's only gonna be able to make adjustments once a week?
Something that affects public view or public funding on top of it should at least be discussed, yeah. I mean, a week's not a terribly long time.
Hell, I'd, I'd rather be in favor of just the mayor and the treasurer doing it together and.
I would rather work together, but yes.
How about mayor and the treasurer, I did for some reason one side vetoes it can be brought to council by the person who pushed it. Still, if some, if vetoed can be seen, how about that?
Or if treasurer is absent, one of two.
Or if treasurer is absent, yeah. It doesn't stop anything.
In theory, I love this idea. The reality of the situation is though, similar to how kind of got bogged down term one, suggesting penal code changes and stuff, which is ultimately kind of a bastardization of what our, our intended purpose as the council of eight is. I am afraid that stuff like this would bog down our already long meetings with stuff that I could handle almost instantly. We're making it too top heavy for the meetings and it's taking away valuable time that we could be spending on. In theory, if this were to pass, we would have to dedicate, you know, maybe an hour, maybe two hours to going over all the proposed ideas or changes. And then we've got hours after that to go through the actual meeting that should be, uh, enriching and fleshing out life in Los Santos.
I agree with you in that. That's where I think Cantor was just making her point is that we can do this, you and I, without needing the entirety of the council side to it. Should something need or we disagree, you bring it to that. I don't think that we will disapprove very often, my friend.
I don't think so either, but at the end of the day, I think this is a unnecessary, uh, bureaucratic tape. As the head of bar said, I think that it is small overstepping because you are an unelected official. You were selected by the chief justice. Uh, you are his clerk essentially. And I think that as I represent the majority of.
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know too much about the.
Sorry, clerical position.
Don't put me down. I gotta vote just as you and everybody else. We all have a vote here.
Okay, fair. As the majority elect.
Put me down in some shit.
I'm not, I'm not putting you down because I honestly, I'm super impressed with this, uh, and I'm super impressed that you took the initiative to this. And, and it, it is not a simple thing that you just tried to do right now, even without Solomon Walker, who I know is in your gang, who I know that if he was here, you would have a much better chance of passing this, but you still came here and you fucking tried. And that speaks so much to your fucking character that I'm actually super impressed. I'm super fucking impressed. I don't think that right now, uh, with my history and my record, that it is warranted for a selected position like the treasurer to have as much power as is stated in this document as the mayor, who I currently represent the majority of the people in Los Santos.
While that may be your thought with that, I, I'm not sure why you go to Solomon and Gang and make that a part of it. That's kind of an interesting quip to put in there.
Well, no, I, I, I highlighted that because it speaks to your character and your intentions to me. I know that this isn't just a power grab for you. I said that as a compliment and I want the people to know that you are TJ Walker, the treasurer and not TJ Walker, the A D M C man. I want people to know that because I respect what you brought forward, even though the odds were stacked against you in this meeting. That's why I brought it.
When I interviewed, uh, I'm going to once again, put this out there. If you want to bring it up and you want to continually put on the side that I'm A D M C, this is the first thing I said to Crane. If this is an issue, I put it flat on the table. I come here, business is business.
I told him that already. I told him that already.
Yeah, I know. I, I leave all that shit on the table. My, my purpose of being here is for the betterment sides of the city. And you may not think that this is needed now, but my friend.
Sarcastic TJ.
No, no, I know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that you are.
Complimenting you.
What I'm saying is that Max, when whatever hell happens to you at some point in time and you go sail off into the sunset, everybody else around this table at some point in time may no longer be here, that the vision that we're doing with this is as for the betterment of the city. You may not think that you need it now and you may not, and we may not have to do this. But what I'm saying is that this is some, setting something that has grounds for the future on top of it. Max, when I say that I have lived through an era of more corruption than anyone else in this room, I probably mean that.
I don't, I don't disagree. I've heard stories.
As a strong ass founding fathers argument right there, he's basically saying that we should be like, you know, some of those religious men who voted to not make religion a part of their state. He's saying we should, you know, we should basically limit ourselves, not for fear of ourselves, uh, but for love of the future.
My issue is that I think the limiting is directly detrimental to fast paced life in Los Santos. And I think the people appreciate a mayor who can respond to them at the drop of a hat. It is something that I've tried to do term one and something I'm trying to do term two, and I think it's something that I've done extremely well.
I'm just putting it out there. I just don't want those things, as you described how you responded to it, to be seen as favors or one offs for individuals that may show favoritism in a certain way. It's not hard. It may take a, a solid five minutes. That's it.
So here's what happens, okay? I do favor the people. I want them to make money at the expense of the state. I want them to feel like I am there for them. If it ever seems like I am doing something that is demonstrably corrupt in favoring a certain group, that's why you have the ability to export the state account, figure it out. And the check and balance is you suggesting impeachment. A pretty easy process. That's the check and balance. It's a very simple one. If you can prove that I've been corrupt, you bring it to the council, I get impeached.
So let me also just put this out there. Crane, just a quick thing, when you all put together the constitution side to it, nowhere in here do I, do I mention impeachment, by the way. Impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it Crane?
Say what?
Impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it?
It's a bureaucratic proceeding essentially handled separately from civil or criminal code.
Correct, so you're not subject to 30 days.
It would not be subject to a statute of limitations.
So Max, when you just said that you made a decision that you should have been impeached upon, upon your last thing that Etta did not catch on you, isn't that technically still at this point impeachable?
Which one?
Last week when you said you acted in a corrupt manner and making sure Cornwood kept his job?
Well, it wasn't really corrupt.
What, what are you guys talking about?
No, his exact words, no, I'm gonna clarify that shit.
Let, let them say it, because Cantor's been sniping at me the last two hours and I want her, I want to hear it from her mouth, please.
Sure, that, that was it, you know, since, you know, we're bringing these things up, you've admitted twice to corrupt things. Last meeting, you brought up that it was a reach of your power, an overreach of your power to.
Potentially overreach of my power.
Right, perfect. So someone should look into that probably.
Yeah, uh, maybe you should.
Here's the part, right?
I'm a doctor, Max. I actually have a job.
Well, if you were a doctor, then you would have probably spent your time term one advocating for doctors and EMS instead of having my wife write the only fucking thing you brought to this table, Cantor.
What are you even referring to on that?
Drug scheduling. That's your one contribution medically.
You know that Norman Adams wrote that, right? And she didn't.
You didn't even write it!
I did say, I did say that when I presented it, just throwing that out there.
What have you done for your people if you cannot even do one thing? What?
If you actually paid attention, I passed numerous pieces of legislation I pushed through.
Go on.
High rates, I, sure, I might have pushed for things that other people wrote as well with the drug scheduling. Uh, but I've got PIPA. Alright, let's see here, let me pull this up.
Three months, by the way, three months.
Alright, I've got, I brought PIPA, I've got F A F O, uh, I, I did the testing for the drug scheduling. Economic thing, which, uh, has been taken over by TJ, uh, was, I was happy to work with him on, uh, as well as the more recent, you know, dubbed horny tags. I'm also one of the loudest people in these meetings to make sure that I can advocate for, uh, my staff and the people of the city.
Did you, uh, you pull that from the Discord announcement your husband made or is that like off the top of your head? The one that told people to vote for you?
Uh, if you can read, it didn't say that.
Hey, hey, let's, let's, you know, let's bring it back in.
No, it's okay, Max. You know, this is very clearly you just saying you want to maintain the ability to punish and reward anyone at will so that they will do your bidding. If you want that power, sure, I'll vote yes, let's go, fuck it, it's gonna pass anyway.
The, the thing is, is right now, I'm dealing with TJ, who is a good man, uh, who is an unelected official and I'm dealing with someone who cheated to get elected. And you are trying to tell me what is and is not impeachable.
There, Max, uh, yeah, okay, then, then do something about it. If I, if I apparently did something so bad, then fucking do something about it other than extorting me by punishing both EMS and doctors and saying that the only way you will raise the pay is if I admit to a felony offense, which would have me made ineligible to sit on the council, which would mean that you have one less person to vote no to you.
That's fair, but at the end of the day, I think I would much rather prefer someone like you in that chair that I know is not a threat as opposed to someone who might have been elected fairly, who might actually propose and act as a threat actively to me in these meetings.
Max, I got 60% of the vote. Uh, how, how much could I have done, uh, to do that when we have, uh, over 60 active doctors every month? And I got 47 votes, which is 60% of the vote. You know, you can keep making this shit up. I think you're so far up your own ass, you think I actually cheated, uh, at this point, when that is clearly not what this is. And you know what? I even spoke to the person who showed you that today. They admitted it to me, uh, and they're fine. I don't not intend to, uh, out them publicly because I don't want them getting hate for it.
Yeah, don't want them, don't want to fire them in retaliation like you've done to other doctors, right?
Uh, I have not fired anyone for retaliation about speaking to you.
What about, what about the guy?
For giving you splints.
Yeah, you fight.
We were told our pay could not be raised if we let that continue to happen.
No, you were told your pay will not be raised if you cannot fire an active doctor.
Oh no, this was early. This was early on. It was one of the first things that Crane and Anetta told me. Doctor pay cannot be increased while medical supplies are being handed out. And y'all, because you think you're so fucking special and can get away with everything, took that from an intern who had to be like, oh.
You're talking about my wife when she was injured at the, the prison?
Yes, so, uh, technically I didn't know that part. I'm already broke. Two rules in that fact. There you go.
So you didn't fire her because she helped my wife?
No, not because it's your wife, because she admitted to giving out medical equipment, which from the tippy top of Derek Shaw is one of our two rules that we cannot break.
Your husband.
It was used in the prison. It didn't leave the prison. She gave it to me and it was used in the prison. My leg was broken.
They are not to take medical supplies anywhere outside of the hospital, including the prison. That's been told to them many times.
Yeah, I can confirm that, by the way. That's not even their decision. That's like, that's the state.
She just healed, she just, she just used it.
Yeah, that's even worse. That's even worse.
That is worse. That is actually worse. If she was signed in out there, that is even worse.
I'm not gonna join in the, the personal shit you guys go, go behind forth. But if, if you're gonna start talking about doctors doing medicine outside the hospital, Jesus, yeah, that's, that's like a non-starter.
What was, what was the other impeachable thing? I'm curious.
It was actually what you had said just not too long ago in the meeting in regards to things that you had done that should have been under investigation that were impeachable, which is the actual quote you just said.
Potentially impeachable.
I'm gonna step in. Knowing Max, as well as I have over the first term, I can almost certainly guarantee you that any comment he made to you about, you know, something being impeachable or whatnot is one of two things. Either one, it is him being extremely tongue in cheek and using hyperbole to make a demonstration regarding the fact that essentially nothing he has done, uh, with his public powers is actually worthy of impeachment. And thus he's baiting someone into acting on something that he finds humorous, that they would even consider it. Or number two, it is something that is completely fictitious that he is baiting you with because not only, there, there is one more thing that I think he likes more than, you know, being tongue in cheek at people and that is lording over them after his long-term concocted plan succeeds. Max fancies himself a mastermind type personality who thinks he can, you know, control all little puppets and blah, blah, blah. I don't believe any of this shit for a second that he's done something actually impeachable with the public powers. And I think that he is basically just being a smug little dickhead texting to his girlfriend over there. So that's my consensus.
I just pulled my phone up.
Yeah, and that's what you were doing.
I had a conversation with my wife last night where we literally, almost word for word predicted that is exactly what you would say.
Well, that's the reality. I'm not saying it because I'm wrong.
Take a look to see if that's acceptable on your behalf, if we can meet on the compromise with that shit. I mean, it could even be one versus the other. If you want to do it, whatever.
Like I said, there are certain things about this that I like. Section six in particular, I would remove section eight entirely. I would, I don't like section five because it slows the process down.
The roles and responsibilities is that, that you were trying to get Etta to be empowered to actually go through, be the point of contact for funding requests and make those and kind of be the final determinants with it, which 20 minutes ago, that's what I said that you liked that.
I, I like section four. I think that this is also unnecessarily bogged down because it includes requiring my signature for stuff like that. I think that the treasurer should be able to review stuff like that and to completely just be able to do that themselves. And so long as you're reporting on what you're doing, so that we all know where the money is going. That's it. And so long as you're reporting on what you're doing, so that we all know where the money is going. That's it.
So if I strike out on five, the mayor's side to that, and then strike out on number four, also both the mayor and the mayor's side to that. Two things, if I remove those, that's less that you have to do than complies with what you're requesting.
It's more about empowering us on a, a middle management level to be able to actively and quickly respond to people and to be able to do that, like I said, at the snap of a finger, at the drop of a hat. I want people to be able to call you TJ and be like, hey, here's my idea. Can we meet? Boom. One hour later, you decide whether or not that's a good idea. Don't have to wait a week for the council meeting. And then you just give them the money and you make a little report on it and then we all know. I like the quick response time.
That's why I just removed from your side to it.
Hold on, I got a question.
That's my philosophy.
What if we could, and I agree with you, Max. I, I think your, uh, perspective on sort of these middle managers and their little fiefdoms, being able to make quick decisions that are, you know, strategic, makes for a more like, you know, dynamic executive board type, you know, operation. Now, I certainly would always, and I always have, reserve the right to do things with the DOJ. So I, I can see your perspective on that. What if, what if the treasurer had a big red butt to like set everything to a null status?
I still don't know what you mean.
Oh.
Well, if the economy is in freefall, what if you had a red butt?
Uh, I mean, that's like the ultimate veto right there. Red, gone.
I mean, I feel like that kind of works against the first thing that you said, right? Like the rainy day fund?
I like the rainy day fund.
Uh, that's thirty million that we discussed, yeah.
And I will say out loud, I did send the economy into a fall. I did. And I also demonstrated that it was very easy to get it out of that fall too.
There's room to do that now because we don't have encumbrances, right? That's not to say we won't.
Things are trending in one direction. Friend, sure, you might have a trend of like a week that's bad. But how's that trend looking over the course of like a month, two months?
Well, he just said that he literally just did it.
Play out.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, but he literally just said that he did that.
To his point.
Prevented him from doing it again.
Sure, but I mean-
I, I'm going to do it again. Let's be clear about that.
Again, yeah, like even if it's, it's gonna happen because of how he's planning on playing things out over the course of the next three months.
That's my fiscal policy.
Yeah, if, if you have that freefall hit again and then you come in big red button, but you're not letting the plan play out, then it might make things worse because you're coming and putting a stop to it before the plan's in place.
So let, let me just back up real quick because I, I'm trying to understand this.
Alright.
And I'm, I'm trying to just kind of wrap my head around it. A lot, there's been a lot of discussions, a lot of points back and forth. So Max, you're saying that you wouldn't mind if I just go ahead and promote this stuff, just approve it as is?
For events, yeah.
Correct.
Specifically.
Correct.
I'm gonna be honest, I wouldn't want state funds in this instance to be, uh, amended to just be for ad hoc state fund requests rather than unilateral state funds.
Can you define that?
Like ad hoc requests, things like Andy Jones, like for your example.
Uh huh.
Things of that nature or the, what we discussed earlier, I don't want to make Ursula have to edit more footage, but um, you know, things like that.
Yeah, those will still be fine.
No, I'm saying only those.
I'm still not sure. I'm not following. Sorry.
I'm saying to amend the definition section in section three to change the definition of state funds.
All money is controlled by the government? We don't have an ad hoc fund or a different side fund on top of that. There is one pot. The other one that we're talking about is-
But we're, we're just, when we're discussing it, I'm, I'm concerned that the phrasing, I, I'm concerned about the phrasing and what it means in other places of this.
Cities government are intended for public use. So the money that people are paying into the government that is then being put to use for them, salaries, compensation, funding requests. I don't have to dumb this down even further, but we all pay taxes.
Yes.
This is a public system that should be used for the people. I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm just gonna cook on it. I'll, I'll let, come back to me.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm not following right now. And that could just be me being everywhere with all the information that we talked about. That's fine. Section five, I deleted your side to that because you don't want that.
Why don't we do this? Let's make section six and four their own like report slash acts, I guess. That would be good. Uh, those are two very good legislations in my opinion.
The other ones are just defining things. So I mean, it goes basically up until one through six at that point. And then seven is just say very much says we have to vote on this act.
Mm-hmm.
So-
And uh, and number eight, I would backspace entirely.
So you want all on full control salary to just send it into a spiral again?
Yes. I, I, I will remind you that the state account is almost, uh, at its peak right now.
Yes, that's, that's, that is fine.
Yeah, courtesy of my actions.
I want to say something because I think this is very important. Even at a time where somebody embezzled hundreds of millions of dollars for a fictitious spaceship program, the state account was still better than it has ever been. So take that for what you will.
So what you're saying is it shouldn't still have happened, but the state account is still fine afterwards. So regardless, you're giving the, it shouldn't happen, but it did happen, but we were still fine.
Well, it, it worked differently back then. Right now, there are a lot of people who depend on their salaries being doled out from the state account. So they're, right now, unless I'm mistaken, the state account is paying for more than it ever has, which presents the very real possibility that it could actually reach zero in the case of say, let's say that somehow another mayor comes in and then wants to build a fucking spaceship and somehow gets a hundred million dollars for it. That, the state account would not, it, it would, it would get so hard fucked situation that Crane just outlined could never happen. Fortunately, we don't have to worry about that because Crane and, uh, the, the lady who was interim mayor worked together and decided, hey, maybe there should be a check and balance on the mayor randomly spending a hundred million dollars.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to work against you. That's what I'm saying. Crane put it, just because you could do it, doesn't mean you should do it.
Well, I did it for a very specific purpose and it was during a time and period where people were vying and struggling to purchase a car or a house or an, or, or a trailer. And I deliberately crafted the system that was provided to me by the state to fatten as many people's pockets as I could that were working legally, that would be getting money from the state account. And the cost of that, of course, was that for a brief period of time, about a month and a half, the state account made no money. And once it was time to pull back, like I, I'd set a number for myself. I was like, I don't want to go below forty million dollars because I think that's too dangerous. It got close to that. I reverted the changes that I made, or rather, one of, just one of, uh, two of the changes that I made. And all of a sudden, the state account was in the green again and we're good. It was my intention always to make the state operate at a loss for the sake of the people of Los Santos. And it worked and I'm gonna do it again.
And let's be fiscally responsible for it. If it does occur, as you say, that it's not absolutely crippling.
It won't be.
Smart.
Yeah, no, yeah, of course. Look, my, my wife has a, a masters in finance. You're a smart guy. It really was as simple as me setting a, a lower limit and being like, I, it's too dangerous to go beyond this number. No matter what happens, if it gets too close to that, then changes have to be made. Everything's great right now. I think in the last seven days, we almost made twenty million dollars in seven days. That is fucking crazy. You know what the best part is? I haven't had to drop anyone's pay. I've raised people's pay, except for group six. I did lower group six, back down to default numbers.
And that's entirely fine. It's putting it for the future, Max.
Yeah, that's fair. So do you disagree with, uh, removing section eight entirely?
What portion of section eight?
The whole, the whole thing.
Specific line?
The whole thing.
So if you go line by line, which one are you not, not good with?
Proposal along the justification of the adjustments, including financial forecast shall then be forwarded to the council for discussion. Don't like that. Approval of salary adjustments must be obtained through majority vote of the council. Don't like that. Treasurer and the mayor will work together for salary adjustments. Should the treasurer and or mayor not be available, proposed will go through the council for final vote. Don't like that. No salary adjustments shall be implemented without adherence to this process. Obviously don't like that. I do like the treasurer assessing salary adjustments. At the same time, once again, I don't want to have to wait for you to do that. And I'm doing my own assessment. And I will say, there exists a, a realm of possibility where you are more qualified to make those assessments. Maybe you're more college educated than I am. Maybe, maybe you have more experience with finance, with economies, so on, so forth. Los Santos's economy is a very specialized thing. And I think more than anyone actually in this whole room and probably in this whole city, I am the most qualified person to assess and to make adjustments because I know what is possible and I know what can be done and I know what will happen.
Instead of putting it as a limiter as to what you can or cannot do, then why don't we just empower and say, just as you can, I can as well. And that's, that's it.
You want to be able to adjust it as well?
Uh, um, you don't have to go through checks. You don't have to go through balances. If you can do it, I can do it. There's no need to go back and forth.
If you want that kind of power, you could run for mayor TJ. That's what I think.
Well, you gave me the other ones to go through funding requests. So it's not too much of a difference. I can go through seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can go through what's just done in a week, which is, you know, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred. I'm saying I'd do it, but it still gives you that power. So we're not bickering back and forth about it.
I mean, if you're keen on keeping some of this or talking about this for an hour, I don't mind.
I know. Alright.
So what we do, we've, what we've done in the past for stuff like this, if it ever got to a point where it seemed like we had to super discuss something, typically we would table it until next week, unless this is in a state that you think is votable right now. Which I mean, I think potentially it could be votable, but we could just wait till next week with the, the revised tabled version or whatever.
I think it's actually complete now. We went through line by line and said what we don't like. So I don't foresee that changing whatsoever. I'm just removing the stricken things now and I think we can vote on it.
Okay.
It is, it's done. That's done.
Who shall start this vote? Uh, we'll let TJ start.
Alright, all in favor? So my left, Cantor?
Yeah.
Crane?
Uh, I'm gonna vote no if I have to vote on everything.
That's, that's kind of the way I feel about this as like an omnibus type of bill.
I have no idea what that just meant.
I mean, it's like when you put a bunch of stuff in one thing.
Uh, Cornwood's next vote. Cornwood?
Alright, so how about this? If I take out eight right now?
This stands to percolate a bit more and be discussed a bit more, maybe for, you know, uh, another week and be tabled.
Want me another two hour discussion with this? I'm happy to do it.
I think I can endure a two hour discussion if it's in the best interest of the public, not rush a sweeping-
Please let me know because this is all about transparency. This is all about the people. There's nothing in here that is not for people or transparency that is deterministically against anything in the best interest of this city. So if you're gonna sit here and say it's not, then I'm very concerned real quick.
I'm gonna defer to Crane and vote now and discuss amendments later. And as it is right now, without further discussion, maybe you know.
Siobhan?
No.
Also no.
Okay, so let's discuss what would change that.
No.
Removal of section eight entirely. I don't think it is in the best interest of the people of Los Santos if, uh, an unelected position, like the treasurer, has the ability to assess and change salaries.
Can I ask a question? We in the beginning had a number of discussions, uh, and meetings that I thought were very productive about adjustment of salaries. We talked about cops, we talked about EMS, we talked about all these different things, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now with the police, I can understand that the way that the PCP has manifested in your first term, right? When that was authorized, it made sense that that superseded sort of what we had been doing because that was targeted at a very narrow and very specific task, right? Of micromanaging one department.
The PCP didn't have anything to do with my quota system. That's something that I would have presented to them regardless. After I was gifted the, uh, the powers by the state to adjust their pay.
Okay, and I guess, and I guess, okay, so let me, let me ask that. I, I understand, for example, your, your concept about Angus and Mosley's, right? That makes sense to me. What is the emergent need for the ability to rapidly, without council discussion, change, let's say lawyer pay?
What's the emergent need for the restriction of that power? This is a present, presentation that was designed to restrict that ability. What is the emergent need for this?
Well, hold on, we didn't restrict it actually. We went line by line and got rid of restrictions for this and actually empowered it.
When it was initially presented.
I'm not, I'm not asking this in relation to-
I'm not talking about when it initially presented. I'm saying, Max, come on now.
I, I understood, uh, and I understand the, the argument about why it doesn't make sense to have a check and balance on the mayoral powers, be in emergent situation. What kind of scenario would forego the potential for like mutual discussion?
Well, first of all, we only ever discussed it at the council of eight because the mayor did not have the power to make an adjustment. It was our only method of having our voices heard was to meet in this room and then to make suggestions on pay changes to then be given to you, which would then be forwarded to the state. Which, there are some forwarded changes that haven't even happened. And I'm pretty confident, I don't, I don't know if it was, uh, Siobhan, what was the, the one actual pay that didn't actually go through and get changed? I think it was maybe DOC? There, like there was, there's-
I remember it was us. We talked about-
Oh yeah, it was us!
It was us. It was us.
Yeah! We talked about that. It was, no, the, the doctor one was the one that didn't go through because the state said that they were worried about corruption at the time and there were several people removed as a result of that investigation.
Doctors?
I think that's before what we're referring to. That was like one of the first few weeks.
Yeah. Well, no, it was, it was longer than that.
No, but our two hundred dollar an hour pay didn't go through.
What is city council currently?
Uh, nine hundred, I think?
Yeah, nine hundred.
That was what was said.
Okay, and what is it supposed to be?
It's supposed to be eleven hundred, right?
Yeah.
Okay. When we were making these suggestions and changes, that was the only way that we could do it. Now I can do it. Now I have been doing it to great success.
So that speeds up the decision or the process, uh, whether the decision is made by you or us, right? Now it no longer has to be forwarded to the state. We can just have a quick chat and you walk off and do it, like has been done a couple of times, including last week with EMS pay. Uh, it still increases the speed on it. Uh, I fail to see how it makes a discussion unnecessary.
Unnecessary?
Yes, you're arguing, you're arguing that there shouldn't be a discussion. You should just be able to do it.
And I am arguing that because I have done an excellent job. I have done an amazing job.
Many people that would disagree with that. The amount of people we have coming in complaining to us about what you've done with I know Toa, PD, whatever, since they heard about our pay decreasing.
Yeah.
It's not even just EMS and doctors. Uh, I promise there are plenty of people who would disagree with that.
Well, they should have voted differently.
I think they did, which is, uh, you have less votes than last time, uh, and have a deputy mayor that disagrees with you. These people tried to get you out.
They failed. Why did they fail?
I don't know. There was enough people that, uh, you paid off probably. What I'm accusing you of is what you were directly stating that you were doing, uh, is creating this big bubble where everyone gets paid a perfect amount, uh, to make them all really happy so that they revote for you.
See, that's the thing. I didn't know I was actually running for reelection until about like two weeks beforehand. And most of my fiscal policies, yeah, my, yeah, my wife, my wife was gonna run. Yeah, totally.
So would it not make her look good if you, uh, used your powers to do so?
Yeah, I suppose it would, but she didn't run. I ran.
So it still benefited you.
The golden age had nothing to do with anybody running for election and everything to do with performing the role. And it was, changes were made as soon as Max had the ability to do so. He would have done it sooner if he had the ability to do it sooner. So the timing just happened to line up.
The question asked was that you have done an amazing job, uh, and what I bring up is that many people disagree, uh, and are unhappy, including doctors who have come to me who stated that they voted for you and now regret it.
Unfortunate. They should talk to their liaison and get their pay fixed.
Uh, we do not intend to give in to your demands.
You don't want to make it so that you guys are held to a higher standard and thus can be paid more by the state by way of not hiring felons? And that you, you don't want to have to go through every twenty one days?
Not my decision, Max. I'm not a board member. I know, uh-
You're married to one!
Back and forth on this. No, he is not. He's an attending like me.
Okay. Alright, well, uh, your pay will remain at that. Uh, and in fact, until Happy speaks with me, it will also remain where it is. I don't think he's a good leader.
So they are currently as high command of doing the entirety of hiring and firing. I've offered some, uh, solutions that will help speed it up. Uh, do I think they are in the best state? No, however, that was not intentional from Happy's point. Uh, he is just trying to work off of the fact that people, uh, have left. So they are doing what they can in the meantime.
Did you bring to the board members my, uh, two demands?
I spoke with Janetti, um-
What did he say?
Uh, he was just uninterested in it.
Okay. You didn't speak to anyone else on the board? What about Pixie? Tarantino?
To be very frank, uh, Pixie is not incredibly interested with having these kind of discussions with me, uh, when I try. Uh, she does not want to be involved.
And who is the, the last member of the board?
Derek Shaw. I struggled to get a response from him on a good day. That's about that.
Sounds like the hospital's in trouble then, if you're not able to meet a simple board meeting in order to discuss having all the, the dozens and dozens of doctors that voted for you have a fair and livable wage.
If you have an issue with the fact I can't speak with Derek Shaw, say it up with him himself. We do a great job of running the day to day and our doctors know that. And I do everything I can to make sure, uh, that they are happy and well taken care of. And I've had many discussions with them regarding the pay and they're all in agreeance that, uh, we will weather this if we have to. Uh, that it is not worth giving in to other demands of a terrorist.
Former terrorist, two-time mayor, uh, and also the, the, the purpose of your role is to represent the will of the average doctor. So you're saying that the average doctor in the hospital is okay with making five hundred dollars per hour because they think that, that making it so that felons cannot work at that hospital and that inactive doctors should be fired after twenty one days, you, that, those are the two, you told them that and they, they are okay with weathering the storm.
Twenty one days number is something, uh, I've only just heard. You didn't bring that up before. Uh, you seem to have no issue.
I said, I said, I said three weeks. I said three weeks. Twenty one days, seven, fourteen.
To be clear, no, they, they really don't have an issue. I've brought it up with many people, uh, including at our meetings, um.
What I'm learning now is that your leadership is unwilling to negotiate. What about, would you guys be able to do four hundred an hour?
For what? What's your request here?
For the same, the same request.
Same request? Uh, we're not interested in meeting the demands.
Three hundred.
Offering to, to lower our pay to meet the demands? I, I mean, you know, no. If we weren't interested before, we still aren't.
Okay, well, back down to 250 it is. At least until you guys are willing to negotiate.
Perfect. No, I will not negotiate with terrorists. I'm good.
I mean, I'm just looking at the thing there. Isn't that almost like basically kind of extortion? You're trying to compel another person.
Oh, he already did that. He blatantly told me I had to admit to a felony.
Officer, state employee to perform an official act within the course or scope of their employment?
But see, Max is put himself at the head of the PD so that everyone's too scared to prosecute him for anything.
Yeah, definitely not because you guys don't have any fucking proof.
We will continue focusing on the people and not you.
That hospital functions without doctors. The only necessary branch of that medic.
Argument you're gonna make?
I'm, I'm telling you right now that I, I don't give a shit about that, okay? The only part of that hospital that needs to be there are people doing EMS and that department is fucked up. So if you think you are making a statement by sitting in your hospital and saying, guys, Max is an evil man. He, he's extorting us. He's a, he's a terrible guy and he, he really, he hates doctors.
I think people have the, the right to know. You're all about transparency now, right?
Yeah, and I'm gonna be entirely transparent. I think you are a sham. I think the head of the board, of your medical board, when they come around, they are frauds. I think that all of you are so lazy that you have allowed a clique and environment to form inside of that hospital that is so unhealthy that people are not allowed to progress in any meaningful manner.
No one.
Hold on, hold on.
And I have had numerous of those people come to me, admit that they did that and tell me that they were wrong. No one has been punished for anything. Uh, I voted yes to your silly little whistleblower thing because we do not intend to punish anyone for attempting to better their situation. We have their back.
You think I am, you think that the whistleblowing protection act was because two people came to me and told me that your work environment sucks so much cock that they were afraid to present themselves as potential runners? You think that's why that was written?
I spoke to the individual who has talked to you today, actually. There is no issue. We, we're on good terms. Uh, we talked through. She apologized for the situation and then we're good. You know, you can keep creating issues that don't exist. No, I, I have my doctors back no matter what they want to do. To be frank, Max, your only issue has been a couple interns who at the time were mad they didn't get promoted and me. You have no actual idea on how the hospital runs or what our real issues are. You for some reason think that it's okay about the doctors treating people outside of the hospital or giving out medical equipment and you think you're, the issue i- is, is me somehow. The person who, who worked 140 hours last month to make sure that I was there every second and make sure that all of their voices were heard. The person that has constant meetings with every single level of the chain of command, the person that has pushed for the most progress, the newest member of the hospital command that has taken the hospital from a sad, overly serious place where everyone felt too scared to do whatever they had to to treat people, to something where everyone has the right to try their best. And I will hire anyone and give them a chance. I've hired someone with a missing arm. I've hired blind people. I've literally turned this place around. You would actually love it. In fact, you sat in on that one interview we did. Y'all loved it. I think that you would love the hospital. If you sat aside for a second, ignored your hatred of me for two fucking minutes, just to realize that the hospital is in the best place it has ever been.
I will admit that culturally that might be the case for you. I don't think it's the case for everyone. And if your argument is that you are in essential service in Los Santos that deserves to be respected, deserves to be paid more than senior buns workers, why the fuck are you hiring blind doctors? Why the fuck are you hiring, hiring felons? Why are you hiring doctors with no arms?
People who can do a good job. We're not gonna discriminate against them.
Okay.
Go back on topic here.
I mean, if he wants to have these conversations, if he has an issue with my leadership, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll.
I think it sucks.
Okay, why?
But, but I will say the.
I just told you why.
What? Because people are scared to come on duty? Those people that have talked to me and said that that isn't correct, that maybe they just, at the time were mad they didn't get promoted or something?
Yeah, no, that's not like.
People. Okay, then why?
Because if I have a heart attack, I gotta worry about the armless Tandy Miller doing my heart surgery. That's why.
So now you're mad that we haven't gig capped unemployment?
No, it's not, it's not about, it's not about gig keeping.
That we were?
No, your whole, your whole point and argument is that the, the hospital is so essential and so necessary and must be here and that you are doing the best job and that everything is great. But at the same time, you think that you deserve to be paid more than $250 when you're unable to.
I do not give a fuck about the pay. I could have bowed my fucking head and been real careful and just begged you for a pay raise and I'm sure I could have got it. I do not give a fuck about that right now. I care about defending the fact that we are doing our fucking best and there are amazing people in that hospital who are trying every fucking day for this city and I will not have you shit on that.
I think they're doing great and I bet they'll be able to do it.
Not feel that you think that.
No, I know, seriously, I do. And I think that they'll keep doing it for 250 an hour.
Sure, yeah, they likely will. In fact, you know, sure, they'll, they'll love to hear about this.
Good.
The tiny amount, the drop in the bucket that it is for the state budget, then you go ahead and do that.
So let's not worry about the pay. Don't worry about the pay for a minute cuz obviously it don't work, okay? They got their pay tripled last week and we still only had one EMS. So what else is there that we can do to help out the EMS that is not related to pay without touching the pay?
You're, you're. Bored everyone with bad personalities.
Okay, I am.
And the EMS will be happier to be at work cuz they'll talk to people who actually wanna be there.
It's a.
Does that work for cops too?
I, that's a bold response. I mean, guess it might make things better for them.
I mean, is there, is there anything we can do to make the EMS have more fun?
I'm be honest, last time I did volunteer EMS, I just went around rubbing dirt and everything. That was pretty fun.
That sounds great.
Even if the person just been shot in the head, I just rubbed dirt in the wound and said suck it up pussy and then got them to their feet.
I don't disagree. It's a fucking sanitary. You'd be surprised. Yeah, it's a, it's a real thing. Absolutely it is. For the EMS, obviously, you know, they, they've had requests. A lot of it's financial. I think they are in an unfortunate position where there's not that much that helps other than financial because when their pay is lowered, they essentially have to work other jobs just to afford to be on duty. I can say from the doctor's side, it's the culture that encourages people to be around more than anything. It really is that morale thing. For EMS, I don't hear complaints. They seem to be happy as a group. Maybe, I think these fundraising events will help to increase morale as well. But they've, you know, been planning those for a long time, not Max motivated on that. But hey, you know, now they have to instead of just want to, so fuck it.
Okay, what if we gave EMS guns?
I love guns. I don't know if they love guns. I do. I'm on board for that.
Care, are they allowed to carry a civilian firearm on duty?
I don't believe so.
What if y'all change that rule? So, so at least they don't feel like they're sitting duck. So they can carry their civilian firearm and they can stand their gun.
Wait, who's targeting the EMS?
They've been robbed quite a bit.
They do get robbed, yeah, for medical equipment, absolutely.
All the time.
I don't think they're targeted as targets to harm, but to rob, absolutely.
So why don't we just make a law about making it illegal to have like ifax or whatever?
We already have it.
It is, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. Problem solved.
I think, look, you got 750 right now. Let it ride out. We all know money, money ain't a huge mod.
I thought, we said it was 250.
For doctors.
No, that's a doctor. EMS is gonna go up to 1,000.
I'm just gonna say this every time that we have these meetings and every time we discuss this, it's a great feel-good and everyone gets pats on the back and people will temporarily be happy. Pay adjustments have never solved anything in the long term. They will not continue to do so. Rest my case. I said this the first week of our first term.
Yep, you did.
I don't disagree. For me, it is the statement you're making, of which I'm trying to bring up because people do not believe you care about them and neither do I.
Okay, are we done with that one? Well, we got that out? There you go. Um, so I just wanna finalize that, clear that out. If I just delete eight, just amend it, revote it, and that would be my final thing for the day.
For a long time, we've operated on the assumption that give money to various departments.
And police aren't allowed to be supported by anybody other than themselves.
And I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that section four is kind of establishing that we would be able to do that.
Sort of like asking me to give Suarez 35 grand.
That was for his next pay thing.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna pay that out. I'm, I'm gonna pay that out of pocket.
Oh, you're gonna pay that out of pocket? Okay, well, never mind.
Wait, wait, hold on. Wait, what? Suarez gets 35 grand?
So it was asked of me to pay Suarez out of the state account for the quota. I reviewed the quota, talked to some members of command and they explicitly said that that is not how it works. And so I did some due diligence behind it to understand what that process is. The reason why I even held off on that is because if I start opening, paying people quota sides to it as part of the state account, that opens the door for anyone that had at any point in time gotten quota and say, why not me too? Where's my handout? So that's why I was gonna.
Uh, I said I would do it because he contributed a lot to, I think it was two different quota weeks. He was top three or some shit. And he wasn't available to be around to reap the benefit of that. And I said that I would see about getting him paid. So yeah, it's coming out of my pocket, which I'm totally fine with. I think he deserves it.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, it was what he was calling me every day for.
That's fair. I mean, he probably has some, probably needs some financial stability now that he's been fired for doing his job.
Uh, I mean, he's got a gauntlet, nice one. He was saying that he was trying to use the funds to buy a new one, so I don't know what he needs.
You gonna buy two gauntlets?
I just wanted another car, is what he said.
You know, I was looking at the Carfax for the gauntlet versus all the police vehicles. The Carfax rating is 150 points higher than any police vehicle we have. It's kinda wild. We're seeing gauntlets all over the city now. Kinda crazy.
I don't know why it says that. I would definitely rate some of the cop cars above the gauntlet, in my opinion.
There's a black gauntlet, R O Alex Suarez, that shows up everywhere, every single time.
Oh, so he's doing a, what was that guy's name? Is there some guy, is, is like?
Why, was this Saleem?
Yeah.
Oh, my God! It was fucking Saleem. Okay, I actually do know that one. No, no, a different Saleem.
He's probably doing a Saleem. That's why he wants some money to get a new gauntlet cuz you guys are tracking that plate, so he wants to buy a new car cuz he can't change your plates anymore.
Oh.
I'm telling you, I know that plate by heart. It's U3377883. Come on. Black plate, yellow text, red lights.
Holy shit, embarrassing.
Yeah, that's, that's a Saleem right there.
We don't know if it's him, but that car shows up everywhere.
Is it in crime shit or not?
Uh, all I know is I saw it and then I got mag dumped two days ago.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I just took out eight and then I think we, that's everything that we went line by line for you from before. That should be all right.
So, so what is the concern with four? It authorizes them to disperse money if they're not authorized to?
This was the portion that you said that you actually liked and that you were just gonna say, hey, if someone wants to come up with an idea, you trust that the treasurer is able to enact on that idea. That is the section that you requested that you liked out of.
Sorry, Max?
Yeah. I went and wrote something in section four.
The purpose of funding events, right?
Yeah, I think that's fair cuz. I don't want a treasurer to be misunderstanding and think that they're able to like, you know, say, give 300 grand to the PD or something.
No, that's, that's not the intent. That is for the city to be put back into the city. Should events like, for example, Pride that was just presented in front of Shavon and I, as well as Andy Stans. That's entirely perfectly fine. So I've removed eight. Max added for the purpose of funding events and at that point, I'm, I'm pretty set and okay, I'm, I'm good as long as other people are good. If, with the amendments, if we wanna vote on those.
Can't forget.
No, not today. I'm good on that. I was cooking on the, you know, your, your very kind offer to come up with my own staff. Then I realized that Ledson doesn't need a free job handed to him like Michael does, so I'm, I'm all right.
Cornwood, you got anything? Got a few things today. I'm gonna try and keep it brief since everybody comes to me bitching and moaning about everything. We already followed up on the shit from last week. Got that done. One thing that keeps coming up from Command, PD Command, is about the times and fines and an ETA on the rebalancing of the times and fines.
I already, so that, that, I already talked to Slacks about that today. To my understanding, there is some data being looked into by the technicians on why the MTT is displaying certain things and why it fluctuates at certain times. But I also noted to them that based on my reading of the latest log, Max has equalized them, correct? The bugs will be sorted out.
The, what the MDT says on charges or what it says when you actually put them in?
When you put everything in, just do your goddamn best. The truth is that we're sorting out a bug and that there are going to be niche use cases where, you know, your mileage may vary, right? But the worst possible thing that is gonna happen is that someone is gonna have 25% more fines versus, you know, same 5% less percent, 25% less time, right? And the, the inverse of that is possible as well, that they'll just have equal, equal, okay?
And I will communicate to the lawyers that they need to just deal with it.
Just deal with it. Just, just let the technician short his shit out and everybody just needs to go back doing their jobs and stop worrying about shit about their pay.
Calm the hell down. Good shit. I love that. Okay, next. Uh, this is another question that comes from Command. Helicopter, do we have any sort of idea how we can?
I am going to be talking with the state on how much the manufacturer is going to charge them for the import of the helicopter and then we will relay that.
Some legislation. I want to bring up a specific legislation because just some shit has kinda gotten out of hand. The PD is weak. The PD is honestly filled with a whole bunch of pussies that are afraid to do their job sometimes. So I said, what better than to give the PD a, I guess, a little bit of impairment through legislation with the Police Vehicle Protection Act? And I went ahead and put that in the, I went ahead and put that in, in the MDT if you wanna take a look at it. It's a report 6217. We basically have people stealing our cars and shit and hindering our ability to do our jobs. And years ago, you know what we did? They're stealing our guns and shit. They're stealing our equipment. We'd shoot their ass, okay? Now I understand that we can't always do that. However, having it legislated, some degree of qualified immunity, if you wanna call it that. If you need to take the force, use the force necessary in the given situation based on where you're standing, where the vehicle is, et cetera, then you can do that and you're protected and doing that.
So wait, you're asking, you're asking for the ability to shoot people to steal your cars?
Not always. Just use the necessary force. If you're at a distance, if you're real far away and that is the only way that you could stop them.
Do you already have that in your SOPs?
I was told never.
Okay, then you're never supposed to do it. We don't override SOPs here.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's just the reality of the situation. In terms of PD SOPs, this council is not in a position to do that. The state is. The state may communicate as much through, you know, myself or through the mayor in some cases, whatever it may be, like we had under the PCP. At the end of the day, that is not something we could decide here and now without state input.
Okay, well, what I'm seeing, I think there might not be anything in our SOP specifically about.
Well, yeah, so you just default to, you know, your SOPs regarding use of force and if those fail you, then result to the law about self-defense. You cannot protect property with self-defense. And if your SOPs don't, you know, allow you to escalate to lethal force for property either, then there's your answer, I guess.
Okay, well, I mean, if somebody can take a vehicle and they're driving away recklessly and they're now, I mean, at that point, they're fleeing felon.
Your argument would then apply to every single bank robbery ever. Just shoot them when they leave.
When you rob a bank, what do you get?
You just said recklessly evading in a vehicle.
You're stealing police equipment. You're robbing them of money, right? When you, when you rob a police vehicle, you're robbing them of, I mean, I might have a gun in there. I might have privileged information in there that could be used to harm the public, right? To be held, held against somebody.
Yeah, but we don't operate lethal force on could. You operate based on your should, right? And the law says that you shoot someone if you can articulate that not only are they fleeing felon, but that they are presently armed and present a continuing and ongoing danger to society, themselves or others. In this case, for you to articulate that, well, there could be something in there, you would not only have to demonstrate that it was in there, you'd have to demonstrate, you know, they had reasonable knowledge of it being in there and they had expressed a previous capacity to use that thing and/or a current intent to do so. So for example, if someone were to shoot at the cops and then steal a cop car and run away, then yes, you would shoot them. If the person just steals a cop car and drives away, then you should not be shooting them.
So what would you recommend that we do?
If someone walks up to you and puts a gun to your head and says, open the locked storage, what do you do as an officer?
Well, you're supposed to say no.
Okay, so if that's the case, then your argument is move, we need to move on from this point.
Sounds good. Pick a vote on it? The concept of the castle doctrine?
I'm all fucking for that. Go.
As a future homeowner, I'm for it.
Uh huh.
Y'all know my stance.
Uh huh. Okay. I might, I mean, I might write some shit up now. The last thing ain't even me. It's, it's, it's half me. Police continuity plan. Uh, what is, is there a job description for the commissioner?
Uh, I actually just wrote one cuz we're gonna do, we're gonna present PCP two or just, I guess it is technically PCP two cuz there's some clarifications that I made. I wrote, the commissioner is the absolute head of the law enforcement chain of command. The commissioner does not answer the mayor's office in any capacity after being selected. Commissioner is empowered to carry out the functions of law enforcement at the highest level as a political attache between the state and law enforcement communities. Based on my research and discussing things with people, two things are, we're getting into PCP territory right now. So if I'm gonna talk about it, I may as well present it. The changes are as such. In speaking with Barrick, in speaking with Cornwood, in speaking with many officers who have expressed an interest in there being another law enforcement department, I initially came to one conclusion. One, I didn't think that there was anyone capable of being the commissioner. That was just based upon my experiences with various officers. This sentiment was pretty much agreed by everyone that didn't outright say to me that it was their intention to try to become the commissioner. I'm willing to err on the side of caution for them. Essentially, my first compromise to this was the people want another department. What's the harm in that? Two different chains of commands. That's bad. If there are two different chains of commands and, you know, there's a situation where one department wants to chastise someone from another department and then the person from the original department's like nah, and I got hung up on that for a long time and I was like, oh, okay, so what's the solution to that? And then I decided the best way to do it without a commissioner would be to make it so that there was at least a de facto head of chain of command. And that would have been the chief of police in this model and the sheriff of this other department, cuz it's gonna be a county department, would be equal to the assistant chief. And that would essentially allow for a, in theory, fluid chain of command. Then I realized, that's fucking stupid. And why am I so afraid of allowing there to exist two different chains of command? What issues could it truly cause that would be ultimately detrimental to the functioning of the police department? Because the police department currently has problems that are so vast, I struggle to even call them a police department because their, their capture rate is so low on a eight-hour basis, on a shift basis, that sometimes it dips down to two people per shift. I understand and recognize that it is not the sole purpose of a police department to be this wildly effective crime-crushing unit that is ultimately 100% superior. And that is sort of the vision that has carried on the initial three captains of the LSPD down to one now, down to one who thinks it's wise to allow Bobby and Carmine to do a prison transport for Ramiel Rahman from MRPD.
Officers on duty.
With six officers on duty, there is clearly problems. At first, I tried to address this problem with competition. I did it with the quota system. First, that worked. Interest in the quota system has dwindled a little bit. I'm still going to keep doing it. At the end of the day, it all comes back to higher pay isn't necessarily a motivator. Spoken to Kyle Pred a couple of times and I'm gonna use Kyle Pred as an example. I know something like what Kyle Pred had will never happen again in Los Santos. Cuz it was dangerous. It bordered on paramilitary. It was a fanatical cult. They wanted to work because they knew, because their morale was through the roof, because they could count on each other and because they could, they could be around each other and know that they had each other's backs. I think one of the first important building blocks of establishing that level of morale is to allow officers to express themselves in the way of choosing if they wish to represent one uniform or another. This is the primary reason for the PCP coming back is to allow us to pass this, which I would immediately then follow with a suggestion that we begin the process for allowing officers to run for sheriff, similar to how, you know, we did for mayor. Get that ball rolling and then, you know, the week after that, start the election. And then the week after that, get them up in the, the Sandy Shores Police Department and get them rolling on that. And after I spoke to a couple of officers, ultimately the model I wanted to settle on was two different chains of command. And I know that this has the potential to cause some tension. If there's ever disagreement between two different commands, what they feel should happen to one particular officer if there's a disagreement. And the solution to that is to appoint a commissioner. And as I've said, there is no one suitable to be commissioner right now. So another addition that I added to this document is to allow the mayor to act as a person who will mediate and determine final decisions that could not otherwise be reached by, between two separate chain of commands established. Established if and when a secondary law enforcement department is established courtesy of this plan. That's what I wrote.
Do you, do you repeat that story? The first part, who was going to do it?
The mayor.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry. I just missed the first part. Who was going to do it?
The mayor.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry. I just missed that.
So the hypothetical here is, let's say Sergeant McNulty decides that deputy dickhead deserves to be punished. And let's say Sheriff Cornwood's like, hmm, nah, uh, you know, and like reverses that decision. And then the sergeant brings it to the, the chief of police and the chief of police goes to the sheriff and they can't meet, reach an agreement. Then they would come to me, they would present me with all of their information and stuff. And I would make a, an unbiased decision similar to how the commissioner should. Because the commissioner would not belong to any law enforcement department. And that would be to ensure that it is able to enact the absolute unbiased decisions that must be made by someone at the head of that chain of command. Because ultimately, two different, uh, it, it already happens with the different, uh, and I would make a uh, an unbiased decision similar to how the commissioner should. Because the commissioner would not belong to any law enforcement department. And that would be to ensure that it is able to enact the absolute unbiased decisions that must be made by someone at the head of that chain of command. Because ultimately, it already happens with the different police shifts. They are tribal. I think a certain level of tribalism is good because it builds toward that morale that we're trying to establish, that has, has not been established and is the reason for lower activity right now out of the police department. Which is then a reason for the lower capture rate, so on, so forth. It needs to be done in such a way that the commissioner can carry out their duties. When they are finally selected, and I hope to God that someone can prove themselves in the next two months, two and a half months or whatever. Where I can confidently be like, okay, John, federal government, this person is the one who is going to move forward, who is able to be level-headed. Blah, blah, blah. It's a whole fucking thing. Long and short of it is simple. If this passes, I will move that a law enforcement department will open in the north. I will move that the sheriff elections begin and I will move that I will moderately and carefully, if I am even called upon, resolve disputes between these two different chains of command. Because right now, I think that internally, the various law enforcement officers of Los Santos could use a bit of competition amongst each other. I think that the competition typically breeds improvement. And I think that if one department excels, it might also inspire the other department to excel. At this point, I'm willing to try anything. This isn't how I always felt, but you know, between there being maybe five or six officers for shift two and zero officers for shift three, I think it's time to try anything.
I mean, look, let's call, let's call a spade a spade. People are finally seeing the same shit I saw three, four months ago. Yeah, everybody sees it. Everybody knows it. So I'm, I'm glad people are starting to understand because it's, it's getting egregious.
What is it?
Do you want us meeting to go another three hours?
I know, I, you're just, you're, you're, I know you're just, I mean, trying to understand, you know?
I feel like I have to ask and this will be with the caveat, this is not intended to shit on it. I'm here for the sheriff's office. I've done all that. But wasn't the first PCP meant to fix things?
Yeah.
What do you think's different here? I'm actually open to it.
It was to fix the chain of command issues though, right, Max?
It was intended to fix everything. Right now, I have done everything that I can for now for the LSPD. What this, what its representation is for is to establish the sheriff's office essentially and to allow there to be two different chains of commands. And to allow there to be a voice that can settle disputes should they arise between both of those departments.
Okay.
So that's PCP two. Questions, concerns?
Do you foresee an immediate benefit to deploying a parallel development track for, for law enforcement? Do you like, like, do you think like, like uh, quota bounties, for example, would just like create an immediate incentive to, for departments to compete and shape up? Like, you know what I mean by a bounty? Like first, first department to get to ten arrests for this like problem crime, like something like that.
It, it, it would allow me to expand quota, which would then probably have that hopeful result. Know that they'll.
Well, that begs the question though, if we're talking about a department up north and department in the city, do they just have identical jurisdiction and requirements? Cause.
Uh, at the end of the day, I don't, I mean, right now, I could not in good faith ask the sheriff's offices, stay out of Los Santos. Because I know that there aren't enough units to even patrol Los Santos right now.
Okay. Well, then, then that makes it, the competition thing kind of has to go out the window then, right?
Not necessarily. The, if a Blaine County Sheriff's Office officer gets a traffic stop, they tag it PCS. This has specifically to do with the quota.
Right, right. So I'm saying like kidnapping, for example, let's say there's a laundromat and the LSPD operate out of the city primarily. Does that mean they just create every laundromat scene? So they just, my wife and I will investigate to see who was the leading officer and how many officers were from each department and go accordingly. It's very easy to uh, figure out the particulars.
Yeah, I'm already going through and adding all of the officers who are involved in each report anyway and separating them out.
I feel like that's going to be a pain in the ass. So you'd have a different, like a different rate of pay between like the county officers and the city officers?
It's not possible.
Yeah, because that sounds, yeah, okay, good.
It's tempting to look at this as a way of saying, okay, well, the PD can't be saved, abandon it, the idea of fixing it. And rather than like breaking up the structure, the command structure that's not working somehow, uh, to create a whole other department and just start from scratch. Which, you know, does give and afford opportunities for other people who aren't getting them now to stand out. Let's say abandon it, the idea of fixing it. And rather than like breaking up the structure, the command structure that's not working somehow, create a whole other department and just start from scratch. Which, you know, does give and afford opportunities for other people who aren't getting them now to stand out. Sure. And it kind of doubles your ability to scout that, but you're still kind of giving up on PD.
Not necessarily. They are allowed to operate as they have and I think it's important to realize that. I don't think that establishing a secondary chain of command in another police department is, is saying that the first one has failed. I think that it is an attempt to breed competition in order to inspire morale.
Okay. No, that answers my question. It's, it's just tempting to see it that way as all.
Right.
I mean, look, there's a major, major morale issue and it goes beyond, it goes beyond the scope of what anybody can even see. You know, whether it's, whether it's me, yeah, it's, it's just, it's bad. It's miserable. I, I would go as far as saying it's, it's actually completely dad gum miserable right now.
I, and I'm not saying this, establishing another department will even be the thing that fixes that. I, this is an attempt to, I feel like I pussy footed on this during term one. Because I was, I kind of subscribed to that belief, Murphy, where I was like, listen, if we do that, then that's admitting that, you know, all of my efforts and attempts with the LSPD have failed. There's a lot of factors at play here that unfortunately I and even people in the LSPD do not have any control over. There are certain directives that must be followed that may not be immediately apparent. There are certain people who unfortunately have lost their job because they felt that they were doing the best that they could within the powers that were afforded to them, only to find out that the rug was pulled out from underneath them. It is scary on multiple fronts to be a police officer. At the end of the day, this is going to be something to allow them to express themselves in a way that will hopefully allow them to build the same kind of community minus the cult that was present years ago.
Yeah, I mean, oh, I don't want to get on soapbox right now, but holy shit, horrible it is. And how helpless everybody feels. I, I just, it is, it is so damn bad where we're losing officers every day. People ain't, they just, eventually they just stop showing up, right? Some of them have, have turned to a life of crime apparently and allegedly. I don't know how much longer and how many more people can take it. It, it is so bad. Like I, I think there needs to be a whole mental evaluation on every single person that's in the PD because there's obviously something that's wrong with, like some kind of self-harm. Like you, you obviously hate yourself if you're a police officer right now. It is bad. Like we're losing, we lost a receptionist two days ago. That, that's how bad the morality.
Can I add to yours, Cornwood? Just a hot second. I'm not disagreeing whatsoever. I'm actually, I'm like, I advocate for your shit. Because as someone that uh, was, you know, you reference Pred's side to it. I've worked during that time as a cop for two years, if you're not familiar too much. Morale's a big thing. Leadership is even a bigger thing though. And you reference Pred's side to it. He is the type of person that actually they fight for his people publicly and internally. Which, as you said, people understand that they have your back, but that's, that wasn't everybody. That was definitely a Pred thing, for sure. Not all departments were like that. I'll be flat out. And that was one of the reasons why I was like, give me the fuck out. I mean, I wasn't in Pred's department. It's a strong leadership that is going to get people to be around someone that actually motivates. Crane, you said it before. Money isn't going to be a determining factor. It is truly putting that right person that is going to motivate people. I've lived through commissioners. I've lived through all of them. But you gotta have someone that's vocal. You gotta have someone that's actually there, someone that people want to rally around. If you don't have that, what the fuck are you doing? Yep. I'm going to be doing a long investigation in the next month or so, provided this passes to learn from my mistakes from the first PCP and to hopefully select somebody who meets that definition.
I got a question. Um, how are you going to be privy to the issues that they disagree on?
They'll both present their case.
I mean, there, there's a lot. There's, there's a lot of issues in the PD. The, the, the bottom line is morale and what really affects morale negative. There's the whole, oh, I can't catch this criminal. I don't think that's really that bad. I think the pay thing, it's not really that bad. Right? Like these, these aren't really big factors when I say not that bad. I think one thing that really hits hard is when you feel like you can do something or you feel like you should do something. Now you want to, you want to reference Pred and that, that cult shit he had going on after I left. I, I don't know. What I do know is this, I'm a big believer in the thick blue line, okay? And I do believe that we need to support each other more. I'm sick and tired of seeing police officers not supporting each other. Because at the end of the day, I know how this city works and we're all we got, okay? When you, when you look to your left and you look to your right, the last thing we need to do is to go against each other, okay? You can still hold one another accountable. You can still teach one another.
Yeah, I totally get that. It's like, you know, for all intents and purposes, you're going to war every day. So if you don't feel like the people you're going to war with have your back and that you don't have that strong leadership who's leading from the front of the charge, morale tanks really, really fast.
Culture, culture changes the type. Cultural movements come from the bottom. I think, I think everybody should know that. If they don't already. I want the Lord's blessing for the good people leading us and that's all I ask.
So I intend to put this to a vote. Do we have any questions before we do that? Okay, TJ.
So you have it in there basically saying you're going to choose a commissioner.
To be clear, I'm going to pick who I think is the best.
Sure.
And then I'm going to forward that person to the state and then they are going to tell me if that person is okay.
You choose them, state says, okay, sure. They come in. After that point, that commissioner is kind of like you're setting them out on a ship and they got their own shit together. You know, they got their crew and then afterwards you've got no longer any oversight basically of it because that's now them.
Yep. It kind of reverts to the way that it is for most departments where there isn't, there isn't like direct oversight that will raise the flag on potential issues.
So you're handholding him until there is actually off the ground.
Handholding, I wouldn't say handholding, I would say, I know what, I know what you mean. Setting them up for success. Uh, just giving them, you know, if they've got any questions, acting as the direct conduit, uh, to pass that on and to have that answered for them in a timely manner.
I got nothing against it.
What is your vote, sir?
I guess that's a yes.
A canter.
It's going to be a bit of a shocker. Actually, yes, you have my vote on this. Also, good job saying Michael did nothing. That, that really helps. Thank you.
Crane.
Are you planning on replacing the chief and assistant chief?
They're going to be under.
Okay. Is the sheriff election publicly voted?
Yep. That's actually what the original three captains wanted and it's a good idea.
Then in conjunction with those two things, I would propose an amendment that states that anyone who has been replaced as high command in the past should not qualify to run for sheriff. For example, if you go through and you decide you're going to shuffle around the current chief police or assistant chief police or you and the state decide you're gonna, you know, do all these different things, then I don't think those people should be eligible for some kind of golden parachute to just go become a sheriff. You just relax a second.
I think that's, that's great.
He's hammered.
All right, get in here, buddy. Let's go. Oh, Zuckerberg, what's going on, gang? Hey, am I right? Sorry, guys. I got some special guests.
Well, we were, we were just in the middle of a vote. What's your vote, Crane?
Uh, with the amendment, yeah, for sure.
Cleese Cornwood.
I abstain.
Okay. Head of bar, Murphy Braun.
Yes.
Chief of staff, Siobhan Thoroughbred. I'm also a yes. Immediately now, I would ask the chief justice to.
At the signups and then we'll do the ballot and blah, 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 blah. Yes, yes, yes.
I pledge to do my best to act kind of similar uh, to a judge.
Wait, what?
When it comes to making impartial decisions as the, the mayor, uh, when resolving disputes between two chains of command. I just want them to succeed.
Have you considered tying yourself to a different boat?
Nope. This is, this is, this is the boat.
Listen, hey, I'm saying DOJ is a steamliner. We're chugging along.
Yeah, because they got a dictator at the head.
Exactly. Goddamn right.
With that, they need a dictator, man. I, they do.
They do.
Oh, now I get it.
I'll take a leave of absence. I'll do it. No problem. I'll be sheriff. Okay. No, now I'm cooking. What if I hire a Fingle as an interim chief justice? And then I'll be the commissioner.
I'm not opposed to that. You're saying this is a joke, but I'm not opposed to that.
I'm on my forty-eight percent shit right now.
Anyone can run for sheriff, so long as they're a cop and so long as they have not been high command, replaced as high command before.
And they are approved by the state in a screening process that will occur directly before the ballot is open. Thank you.
Cleese, you said you were done?
I want to do a lot more of the work up front because it's a softer piece of legislation.
I'll move past that. Uh, is the sheriff reelected every three months or is that, did we codify that? I don't mind either way. I was just wondering. I'm assuming it'd be replaced eventually? Or is it like a, once voted, you're just there?
Six year revote.
Three months is a lot. So uh, or not a lot, not a lot at all. Six year though?
I meant six months, six months.
Six months. Cornwood, what do you think as the PD here? Since I'm a, I don't really have a horse in the race.
I think that if the.
I don't think six is bad and they could rerun. Yeah, that was what I was thinking, right?
Yeah. Yeah. It depends on if you have term limits or not. I think, I think if you have an election every three months with no term limits, I think that's, I think that's good, probably.
I think, I think that the state and the commissioner should probably just, well, no, they should have valid, well, so what we did with the judge elections and what we still will do when we implement them again, as we discussed today, is you basically give people two terms as a voted judge or sheriff or whatever. And if after those two terms, the state is like thoroughly satisfied with their performance, the state has the option to just appoint them as sheriff, right? Because it may be that things are going great and that person is the right person for the job. And if the state doesn't decide to do so, then you just continue with the same cycle of elections, right? That's typically what's worked in the past, at least for the judge, the judge stuff.
It's like achieving tenure.
Pretty much. Yeah. It's a good way to put it. Getting tenure and the state is the one that weighs in on tenure, I think is fair.
I mean, they need some time to.
I don't dislike that. Yeah.
I, I added, I added, a sheriff will have a two-term maximum as an elected official. The state can decide to appoint the, the sheriff in question for a more permanent term if they are found to have served exceptionally well.
Perfect. Sounds good to me.
I added a sheriff election should happen roughly every three months.
Do we have an idea on realistically when the election would begin and how long it would last?
My typical schedule is that we take about a, it's about a four to six day period for signups. So I will announce like, let's say three days at a time, the four to six day period opens on this day at this time. I then put up the signups, people then sign up. At the time and date of the signups closing, there is then a week long election of pure voting. And then it is announced at the end of the election.
Would it be unreasonable to ask for that signup period to be shorter? Because there's only a, a very limited amount of people that are going to be putting their names in anyway.
It is essential that we keep it around a week to allow for people who, you know, might have something going on and don't want to miss such a like monumentous thing. So in, in all fairness to, to everyone, we always, you know, need to, at least four to six days, I think is fair. We've done even longer in the past. That's my shortened version. From start to finish, we'd have a sheriff in somewhere between two and a half, three weeks at the latest.
By the end of the month, we'll have our sheriff by the end of the month.
Come on, do you have anything?
No, not, nothing this week. Just um, for the reminder that I do have tenants rights thing on there. If anybody wants to work on that with me. Did not have time, but this past week, do have like a couple of other things I'm working on, but nothing right now. Nope.
I also, I mean, all I had was PCP two. I think we are done. TJ is, I forgot was.
And mine is still waiting.
Yep. That, that is true. That is true.
Okay. So any nay votes on the incentive program for judges? Ten K for benches, twenty K for dock cases?
Nay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Funding transparency act, that's the one that basically just talked about before. That's everything that is out there. It's public. That is the first one. I just changed it to section three. Just look at section three. That's all you need to look at. And then I get vote.
All transaction tax uh, changes in place, salaries, uh, shall be recorded and maintained in a public ledger. Love that. State funds are subject to information requests and citizens may submit an information request to obtain detailed information regarding the disbursement and allocation of state funds. So about that, it's been a while since I looked at exports. I forget, in the actual export, does it say what the money was used for?
So this is subject to what I get when I can get it. Keep in mind, I don't have the ability to export those currently. Only the ones that are old exports. If I recall from my time in the past, it was two from reasoning, bank account. If you saw from like bank account ID number one, that's coming from the state account. And then you can go from what it is and usually there's a reasoning behind it.
Requesting exports, we can't do it either. We, we literally just have to ask the state to do it for us. So I'm sure you could do the same whenever you wanted. That part looks fine to me. Any adjustments to taxes, salary subsidies or any other action impacted by the mayor's office must be referenced via state announcement. Love that. Must immediately be documented and publicly available, up to date catalog for all citizens to view at any time. Love that. We don't have a way to make a public facing, or at least I don't. Public facing document that people can reference.
Well, it means put it as like a legislation document technically, as a workaround for that.
Crane could find a way to swing that. I do not have the means to edit a legislation document. I am a yay on this, with the understanding that we're going to have to find some kind of workaround or have the ability implemented to allow us to actually make it public facing.
Cancer?
Uh, yeah.
My docket is clear.
Okay.
Murphy?
Uh, uh, yeah.
So Cornwood voted no on the funding transparency act. Okay.
Correct.
Correct. Siobhan.
Voting yay.
Uh, I also vote yay.
Yeah, I had you on there as a first. So that passes then.
You couldn't make it.
And the next one we're looking at is uh, the.
Next one we're looking at is, uh, the funds request act. It's the top one in the reports list.
Isn't this the same shit we already agreed upon, but split out, right?
Yes, that's all that.
Unless this, this empowers, uh, TJ and future treasurers to handle, uh, helping people like Andy.
Sounds good to me.
Right. Yeah. Cornwood?
I know on this one.
Murphy, he said yes.
Big yes for me.
I'm just double checking everything. Uh, come back to me.
Uh, I'm a yay, of course.
All right. Uh, wait, is this a recording? Passes regardless.
Yep. All right. And with that, I do believe we are done.
Okay. So I'm going to go through and let you know everything I'm enacting, just to make sure. Okay. Some of my tags, the cabinet, PCP 2.0, tow clamps and you part two. The thing about sex messages, the rider protection check and the judicial compensation program. Funding transparency and funds request. Everything else is either work in progress or not approved.
Wait, emergency fund. Sorry. I don't think we actually voted on emergency fund real quick.
Oh yeah, we approved whistleblower and we're going to do the, the thing that is not in the meeting minutes. Wait, where's the emergency thing yet? Oh, okay. Yeah, it's approved, right?
Uh, we didn't vote on it. We did not. We didn't vote on it.
Oh, we just debated the 30 million.
TJ and I had a brief back and forth, and then we moved immediately to, uh, the FTA.
Oh, uh, yes.
It's the 30 million. Okay.
Yeah, of course.
Right?
Yeah.
Cornwood?
Yeah.
Murphy?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. Siobhan?
It's a yay.
Max?
Yay.
All right, cool. Approved, done.
Uh, this is good. This is a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Big time.
Rainy day money.
Oh, wait, bones, you approve?
Those are all the things that are approved. So I got a bunch of work to do.